Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here for the Monday, August 16th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting. And our first, I'd like to call the order. Our meeting tonight with the first item in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. We do not have anyone signed up to offer the invocation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and offer the prayer invocation? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and do that tonight then. If I can get away with standing, please. Bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord, and the opportunity to serve you in all matters. And, Lord, we just ask that your blessing upon this board as we conduct business tonight and other people in the audience, get them home safely tonight. And we just ask that you watch over our troops, Lord, as they head overseas and our country, Lord, as we go through some trying times. All this we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, our next item is the approval of agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda or could I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is our public comment. Again, I'll just state that the public comment is a time for the citizens to come forward to speak whatever they'd like to talk about regarding the county, the commissioners, what's going on, unerupted, three minutes. We will pay attention and listen and take notes intently. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on public comment? Okay, hearing none or seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this and move into our next item is the Commissioner's Report. And tonight, I'll go ahead and start with the Commissioner's Report. First of all, I'd like to make the comment that tonight's going to be our county manager's last meeting with us. And so if everybody doesn't know by now, the county manager will be leaving. His last day with the county is going to be August 27th, which is a Friday. The Board of Commissioners will be getting together to work on the next plan of action. We did speak with, or I have spoken with Neil Emery, and he has graciously stated he'd love to come talk to this board and give us some updates. He's with the North Carolina Associations of County Commissioners, just to kind of update us in the processes of searching for another county commissioner, what options are out there, interim positions, and any help that we may like. So I just want the citizens to know that we're going to be actively starting that process to look for our next county manager. And lastly, for me tonight, is that after this meeting, this board and anyone else who would like to attend, we're going to be having the ribbon cutting and a open house at the Public Safety Building, which is going to start at, the ribbon cutting's at 6:00. So it's an opportunity to come, visit and take a tour and get a load of the new, well awaited, long awaited building that we have. And with that, I am going to end this and start with my left at Commissioner Jarvis.
Okay, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the board and the citizens of Currituck County for allowing me the opportunity to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners 114th Annual Conference in New Hanover County last week. The information, the experience, and the dialogue were invaluable to me as a commissioner. We attended, Commissioner Owen Etheridge, Kitty Etheridge and myself attended numerous sessions on, first of all, neighboring counties fiscal distress, which made me very thankful to be in the county that we're in. We also attended sessions on the NC Lottery School Construction Funds and Conflict Resolutions, just to name a few. We toured New Hanover County's state-of-the-art recycling facility, which although it's a dump, they told us it was not a dump, and it was impressive, to say the least. All the speakers were inspiring and thought provoking, but two in particular stuck with me that will certainly frame my decisions and mindset going forward as a commissioner. The first was Amanda Ripley. Her title of her lecture was "Breaking the Spell of High Conflict," and she illustrated how you reduce conflict, high conflict, where basically you reach a stalemate. And the gist of her instruction was that you listen, clarify, listen some more, clarify some more, and ultimately, the goal is to make sure the person feels heard. And it was very powerful with this looping technique. It wasn't, it's not to end conflict, but certainly to allow both sides to feel respected and to hopefully move forward with a palatable decision. The second and the highlight, the second lecture and the highlight was by retired General Russell Honore, who led the recovery efforts, efforts for Hurricane Katrina back in the mid-2000s. His lecture was incredible, and he focused on leadership during disasters and emergencies, which after the last year, we all feel like life is a constant state of emergency with COVID. But here are the four lessons he talked about that he has learned by studying General George Washington. First of all, do routine things well. He said that overlooking the basic details causes big failures. Don't be afraid to think of the impossible. He also suggested making a list of impossible things that you're going to accomplish. Be prepared to be criticized, that avoiding criticism causes more stress and becomes more divisive, and acting upon critical issues takes courage. And then he lastly said, "You never have everything you want, you never get everything you want as a leader, so you have to adapt and overcome." And he stressed the title of his book, "Don't Get Stuck on Stupid," that you have to do what is necessary during emergencies to help people. So it was a great experience. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Jarvis. Excuse me. Next, we have Chairman Kitty Etheridge.
Thank you.
Oh, right. Promotion there. There we go. Come on, let's switch seats right now. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes our constituents wonder why public servants belong to organizations and attend conferences. And as Ms. Jarvis said last week, we were honored to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners 114th Annual Conference. And I'd like to share with you some of the good works that our association does. Nearly two years ago, our president appointed a working group to help craft a statewide plan for the use of funds from the opioid national lawsuit that was the settlement. It included five county commissioners, five managers, and five county attorneys. This group worked together with our association staff and the North Carolina Department of Justice, and they negotiated and prepared an equitable distribution of the proceeds from the settlement. What this means is most of the funds will go directly to North Carolina counties instead of to the state. Counties are well positioned to receive as much as 85% of the state settlement addressing the epidemic academic at the local level. Also at our conference, while discussing emergency management, it was mentioned to me that the president of the North Carolina Professional Organization of Emergency Management is our very own Mary Beth Neames, which I did not know. And what an honor for Currituck County to have somebody in this leadership role. And probably all the county commissioners know, but next month, our clerk of court, Ray Matusco, will be sworn in as the president of his association. We're just so proud of these two individuals and all the dedicated workers who proudly serve and love Currituck County, and we thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief tonight. I too wanted to just wish Ben well as he's taken off. When Ben came, came into the job as our county manager, shortly thereafter, we had COVID hit. And as a young manager, I couldn't imagine having to go through that. Bam, here you go. Here's the biggest crisis to hit Currituck County in a long time, and he had to do that. I spent a lot of hours up here and got to know Ben very well through that process, and the amount of work that he put in, no one will ever know, the hours that he spent here. When the clinic started, he was over there directing traffic, probably well outside of what he should be doing as a manager, but he made sure everything happened. And so for the brief time we've had you here, Ben, it's been my great pleasure to serve with you and to have your counsel over that time, and I will certainly miss you, sir. So I wish you the very best. That's it for me tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner White, Vice Chairman Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too, Ben, fair winds in following seas, good luck, leaving one challenge for the next, and that's called life, I guess, or I think. Mr. Chairman, the topic I'd like to bring up tonight is, has to do with the meeting times of this meeting in the month. I guess it's the second meeting traditionally that's held, and we made a decision as a board to move that meeting time up to 4:00. The reasons giving it the time, given it the time, were that due to the length of some of these sessions, that we would move it up in order to have time to facilitate the meetings. If my math is correct, this is the fifth meeting that we've had that has started early like this, and it will be the fifth meeting that we've had that will end, granted, we have the ribbon cutting at the Public Safety Building, but this one will end by 5:30 so that we can be there at that time. It may not be a hurdle for other members of this board to attend this meeting at 4:00. It is an extreme, extremely difficult for me to get here, to do all of the stuff that I need to do as part of my full-time job in order to come here and provide support to the county. So I'm going to respectfully request we reconsider that, because in my opinion, we have not had a meeting that warranted starting as early as these meetings have started. Second of all, as the chairman of the Board of Adjustment, one of the things that we ushered in and provided with Ike's help and support was that, you know, we set a time that if the meetings went to that time or appeared that they were going to go longer, the Board of Adjustment took a vote to decide whether or not they were going to continue with that meeting that evening. And that board saw some meetings go late. In fact, later than any Board of Commissioners meeting that we've had to date. So part of that was, if the meeting was going to exceed that time, the board had to vote on it and approve it, and it had to be a majority that carried it. And I would suggest something to that effect be looked at. But, you know, it is, again, 4:00 is still well into my workday in supporting the U.S. military, and I would ask that this board respectfully reconsider that decision and look at possibly moving it back to the normal time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I will just state that, that is, then, you know, I'll bring that up at a future meeting for discussion and see, you know, how the board feels about adjusting the times again. But thank you for your comments on that, Vice Chairman. Commissioner McCord.
As Commissioner Beaumont, or, excuse me, Vice Chairman Commissioner Beaumont said, the 4:00 is a little tough. I mean, if we don't have a lot, I don't see why we couldn't move it to 5:00, advertise it, maybe kick it one hour. Anybody in this room saw me walk in here at 3:58 because I had to work for the county earlier and then change clothes and swap vehicles, and then I'm here. Enough on that. Ben's done a phenomenal job here as a county manager. Nobody's perfect, you know, but he's done a really good job. He's going to be missed.
On my side.
Yeah, no, but I mean, hey, my wife tells me that hourly, but, I hope she's not watching. But the, he's done a good job. He really has. His job is brutal. I mean, just, you imagine, just you take complaints from citizens all day long, you take a beating from staff all day long. He has to put up with seven of us, who, some of us are probably pretty difficult, but, you know, probably even myself. But, but he's done a good, but he's done a good job, and I mean, the staff respects and likes him. He's going to be missed. I wish him luck on his new adventure, and hopefully everything goes good for him and his family in the future. Last week, and Commissioner Jarvis and Commissioner Etheridge both attended, I attended. It was the first time we've ever done it in Currituck County. It was National Night Out for Law Enforcement. It's typically the first Tuesday in August, which is a terrible week to have it when it's 100 degrees outside, and it's even worse when you're the guy that's cooking on the grill. But we had almost 200 people attend, Commissioner Jarvis attended, Commissioner Etheridge attended as well, and we served, I cooked 72 burgers and 47 hot dogs, and it was a hot day, too. But like I said, we had a great crowd with kids. We included Camden County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Jones, Kevin Jones from Camden came, the Highway Patrol, I'm going to forget somebody, Almar Hope Line, Wildlife, a couple of other agencies I'm not.
The Army.
Yeah, the, the Army was there, as well as, there's one more. Great event. Hunter, almost, we had a bounce house, the kids had a blast. It was a little hot, but they still liked it. Some adults might have got in there, too, prior to while we were setting it up, but it was a good event. We're going to do that every year, the Public Safety Building being open tomorrow, or actually this evening, we do the ribbon cutting. That's something, and that's where, you know, now we have a facility where we can house it. The kids, kids love the police cars, and it is a good time had by all. And like I said, it was a great event, and I appreciate everybody who attended, as well as thank everybody who assisted in putting that together. I mean, we put that together, it got rained out just once, and we had to reschedule. This Saturday, Kids First is having their event. That was rained out twice.
I mean, Currituck Kids.
Or Currituck, Currituck Kids.
Currituck Kids, 11 to 1.
11 to 1 this Saturday. That's been rained out twice, so hopefully it doesn't rain this weekend, so three's a charm. And pretty much, that's about all I had for the, for the day. Like I said, oh, one more thing, the, we have had some more fires. Our chairman is on the volunteer fire department, so make sure you guys, you know, change your batteries and your smoke alarms and all that good stuff. Thank goodness nobody was, somebody was hurt, but very minimally at the last fire that we had last week. You know, like you said, it's devastating for somebody when they lose all their stuff that they've had forever. You can't replace that. But thank goodness nobody personally was hurt. Somebody got some cuts, was about all. But the fire department did a great job, and actually, it was crazy. A lady actually went into labor that was behind the house where they'd gotten in fire, the fire had started, and like, everybody was like freaking out because the fire department had to shut the water down for a few minutes, and people were getting, not nasty, but they were like, "What are y'all doing? Why are they cutting the water off?" And the ladies was going into labor, so we had to move all the fire hoses, and like I said, and that all worked out, and once everybody realized what was going on, they calmed down, so it was pretty good. So like I said, support your local fire departments. Like I said, those guys do a good job. The volunteer fire departments, as well as our paid and Nats on Corolla, as well as all your other first responders and county employees, so that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner McCord, and we have Commissioner Owen Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I can say to Ben is thank you and good luck in your future endeavors. I appreciate everything you've done since you've been here in Currituck. Like Commissioner Jarvis and Commissioner Etheridge already said, I attended the State Association Meeting, and I enjoyed General Honore. He was no BS to him. He was straightforward, and he was talking about, right after Hurricane Katrina, when President Bush went down, and they were standing there talking, and Bush told him what he wanted to do. And there was a little FEMA guy standing there, and General Honore, after President Bush left, told him, said, "Well, let's get it done." He said, "Well, we got all these paperwork we got to do." General Honore said, "I don't care about the paperwork, let's do it." He said, "Well, how come you can tell me you can do it?" He said, "'Cause we got the guns." You don't. But the good thing about the association meeting is you get to meet with fellow county commissioners across our state, and you get a chance to talk to them about the problems they're experiencing or the solutions that they've come up with, and you get to interchange ideas and network with them. And I can honestly say, I've never been to one that I did not come back with an idea that was able to be thought out and implemented and to the benefit of the county. The National Night Out, there was one little boy there that I saw that just tickled me, the SWAT team was talking to him. So they took their vest and their helmet and put it on him, and he might have been eight or nine years old, and he turned around, looked at his mom and said, "This stuff is heavy." And you could just see the ideas turning in his head, and hopefully, it will help him respect law enforcement and understand the job they've got to, excuse me, that they've got to do. And before I went to National Night Out, I did go to the ribbon cutting and opening of the new Tractor Supply in Moyac. Nice store and buy local. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Next we have is our county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. This being my last Commissioner meeting, I do want to say that it's been a privilege and an honor to work for each of the seven of you all. I've had the luxury in my career of having the same board together for pretty much the whole time, and that makes a big difference for a manager. The pandemic, the epidemic pandemic was certainly trying with a leadership like you all have given, that makes it a lot easier, and with the staff like the one that I've got behind me has made this job a real pleasure. Whoever you all select as the next county manager for Currituck County should be very grateful. It's a wonderful community to be the manager in. You know, it's a place where there are challenges, and you all heard me say this several times, but there's solutions to challenges, and Currituck has the ability to find those solutions where there's a lot of communities that, that don't, and so we're very fortunate that way. Appreciate the, the community and the way they welcomed me and my family into the community. And once again, to the staff, I will say that you all, and you all know this, Currituck County has, in my opinion, the best staff of any local government in the state of North Carolina. You've got people that care, you've got people that do their job, and in my role, what makes it a real pleasure is when I know that the work's being done, I don't have to sit and, you know, keep checking every little thing. That's what makes the county manager's life easy, and these department heads you all have, and the staff that work for those department heads do a wonderful job. And I know that you all know that, but I want to say, you know, tonight, thank you to all of them for, for all the hard work, even though maybe I've asked them to do some things that were a little crazy from time to time. They've always been willing and stepped right up to the challenge, and so I appreciate, appreciate the time here, appreciate the confidence you all have placed in me to help lead this county over the last couple of years. And, you know, I'm, I'm still around. I welcome anybody to reach out anytime they have any questions, but thank you all once again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stackleather. Next, we have our county attorney's report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, thank you. All right, then the next item is public hearings. First item under public hearing is PB 21-06, The Balance Mine Allied Properties LLC requests a special use permit for an extractive industrial mine on a 191.2 acre tract on the southwest side of NC 168 Carrituck Highway and south of Balance Farm subdivision, parcel 23, tax maps 40U, 40C through 40H, 40J through 40L in Moyac and Crawford Townships. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so I would ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter or provide testimony, please stand up if you, if you would, please. Again, if you want to speak in this during a public hearing or any matters on this, you would need to be sworn in. If you would, go ahead and raise your right hand. Have we got some bibles up front here? I didn't know how many people were going to be here, so just practice the distancing that you would like. Have we got enough bibles? Okay. All right, if you have a place left on my right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the information you provide tonight will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Okay, and when this, I believe the printer is, the presenter is going to be Donna Ball.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, evening. Before we actually dive into the staff report, I do want to touch on a couple of changes to the special use permit process, which you may have noticed in your staff report. If you recall, earlier this year, during the board retreat, you directed staff to do a text amendment that would basically remove the staff recommendation from the staff report. We have done that, we've replaced it with staff review and comment, and it, it shows up under the TRC information that you have in your packet. So before you, you have the special use permit, the evidentiary hearing worksheets for this item. I would suggest that you look over those. They, they too look very different than those you have typically seen. They do not have the applicant's information from their application, and they do not have the information from the staff report. So it is truly a worksheet that you will use tonight to help guide you through the testimony and evidence.
Excuse me, okay, could you all please have your cell phone silenced or turned off, please? Thank you, I'm sorry.
So the worksheet will be used to help guide you through the testimony and evidence that will be presented to you tonight during the hearing. Any questions you have regarding that? Okay. So Justin Old, who is the agent for APVA, made an application for a special use permit to allow mining operation, which it's titled Extractive Industry in the Unified Development Ordinance. On a 191.2 acre tract of land, it's also owned by APVA LLC. The tract is located on the southwest side of the existing Balance Farm exempt subdivision. It's shown, highlighted in the teal blue, and the Balance Farm Drive actually extends to this property. The property adjoins low-density residential land uses to the north and undeveloped farmland and woodlands to the south, east, and west. The property is owned agricultural and extractive industry, or mining operation is a permitted use in the agricultural zoning district with the special use permit. The 2006 Land Use Plan classifies the property as rural in the Moyac subarea. The Land Use Plan contains one policy statement that addresses mining operations specifically, and that's in your staff report. It's Policy ID-8, and it speaks to, mining activities may be subject to review and management by Currituck County. The activities to be addressed may include, but may not be limited to, the adequacy of roads that access the mine, the visual impacts that could occur during the operation and after closing of the mine site, noise and dust considerations. The Moyac Small Area Plan includes a portion of this site, since part of this property actually extends in the Crawford Township. You can see the yellow line that runs through about two-thirds of the property. The yellow area is limited service, and that's what's in the Moyac Township, and the area that is showing up as the triangular portion that's uncolored, that's in the Crawford Township. So the proposed mine, the mine plan and permit indicates an 82.85 acre affected area that includes the removal of 57.36 acres of soil material that's between the power line easement and the property line. It also includes a six-acre stockpile area located between the power line easement and the railroad right-of-way. 3.3 acres that includes an earth berm that will help buffer this use. earth berm that will help buffer this use from the surrounding properties, a 7.23 acre haul road that extends from Keritoke Highway and around the perimeter of the mine, and 3.77 acres of other disturbed area. In addition to this application, the applicant is also requesting to de-water the mine as part of the mining operation. And that includes a 4.82 acre recharge ditch. That recharge ditch actually extends around the perimeter of the mine and then will lead into the settling basin, which is .34 acres, that ultimately discharges into the Willie Lee Ditch to the north, which is at the top of this map. The Willie Lee Ditch is a major drainage way that's identified on our maps that drain a good amount of farmland to the south and west of this property, and it also goes out to the creek. The applicant is proposing a total excavation area of 30% of this site, and there's no future expansion of the mine planned at this time. The material will be excavated and hauled away, but what the applicant proposes to do with this project is to actually backfill the mine with off-site materials, which could be clay or other soils deemed possibly not suitable for septic systems, that they will fill the mine back in so it will not be a large pond at the end of the reclamation process. The applicant is also requesting a modified setback, and that modified setback has to do with the haul road, the settling basin, and the recharge ditch. The ordinance requires a 100-foot setback from all property lines, but it does allow a 50% reduction of that setback when there is a visual screen present, or the board can authorize that reduction when it adjoins vacant land or farmland, and it does do that on some areas. And that's, the 50-foot buffer is shown as the dash line around this project. And by dash line, it's the smaller of the dash lines. The large dash line is the property line. They have maintained the 100-foot setback for the mine and the other items. The access to the mine utilizes an existing driveway off of Keritoke Highway. That is a picture of that existing access. And the Willie Lee Ditch that I referred to just a few moments ago as the major drainage way is located to the right of that picture. The access will include a 200-foot asphalt road that will come into the property to help keep down the dust and dirt and sediment from going onto the highway. And it will then cross nine existing exempt parcels that are located in the Balance Farms subdivision. You can see as it turns towards the upper part of the map and then cuts across, it comes back down and in this area right here, it crosses the railroad track over an existing crossing that will be improved, and then extends back to the stockpile area and mine site. The license agreement for this private grade crossing was granted by the Chesapeake and Albemarle Railroad. Also, a driveway permit was issued by NC DOT for the access. And they also obtained the mine permit from the state. If you want to see the contents of that permit, you can find that on packet page 20. The applicant has also obtained the low-density stormwater permit, the MPDES permit that's required for discharge, and also the general permit or nationwide permit from the Corps of Engineers for, there are a couple of culvert crossings here, which is a replacement, and here, which is a new one, that they've obtained all those permits. They can be found in your packet. At the time of the application, there were no in-use wells or ponds within 1,500 feet of the mine or the de-watering activities. There are two monitoring wells that are proposed between the mine activities and the de-watering as well as the wetlands, and they're located in this vicinity. You have the wetland line here, the recharge ditch that goes around the perimeter of the mine, and they are the two monitoring wells. A community meeting was held on November 24th of last year, and the meeting minutes can be found on packet page 78. The concerns related to this operation were really founded on flooding of the New Bridge Creek, the Willie Lee Ditch, de-watering operations, future lot impacts, and maintenance of the Willie Lee Ditch, primarily drainage concerns.
Ms. Valva, before you jump forward, is the Willie Lee Ditch inside the Moyac watershed area that we have established for, is that part of, or part of it is?
It is, it is in that, yes. So the TRC reviewed this project, and there are three main items that I want to touch on and point out to the board. The one is the Willie Lee Ditch. As I mentioned, that is a major drainage way, and it's identified as the discharge point for this de-watering operation. The applicant has indicated that they will clear and snag the portion of that Willie Lee Ditch that's actually on their property from the discharge point to what's an existing box culvert that runs under Keritoke Highway. But part of the problem with this project is that, or with the discharge and the Willie Lee Ditch, is that there are several large trees and stumps that have been identified by our soil and stormwater technician across the road and downstream that could affect the drawdown time of water exiting this property. Also, that the asphalt entrance is within that 300 feet of the existing residence, but the entrance utilizes an existing access point on Keritoke Highway. NC DOT did issue the driveway permit, as I mentioned, and determined that the two southbound travel lanes will expedite the vehicular departure from the highway, meaning that there's no deceleration lane required for or recommended for this project. The third item is that the soil and stormwater technician recommends installing some protection along the road in the vicinity of the Willie Lee Ditch at the railroad crossing. There is one item that is-
Ms. Valva, excuse me for interrupting. Clarify for me what that looks like. What do we mean by installing protection?
So as an example, you can see the guardrail that's located in this picture on the right side. In this vicinity, the road comes very close to the Willie Lee Ditch, and concerns of erosion, maybe some form of riprap or some barrier of sort to be placed in this vicinity.
Thank you.
Ms. Valva?
Yes.
Don't-
Which one?
Who's clicking?
Me.
Go back, or go for-
Which one? Tell me which picture.
The trees. Not, I'm sorry, the technician talking about the trees.
And it's item number one.
Okay, so did the technician provide a recommendation, or did he just say, "Here's some trees"?
He is here tonight and can speak to that. They need to be-
Did he swear in?
No, I can swear him in later when we need him, yes.
He can identify exactly where those, where those trees and stumps are, but, you know, with most applications, a lot of off-site work we can't require to be done.
Understood. I'd like, I'd just like to understand-
To know where it is and what it is.
The issue.
There's one more item that I did not put on the screen, but it is in your packet, and I do want to point it out. And it had to do with the location of the access. I'm going to go back to this image. So this is a recently installed road. It's a gravel road that serves 17 exempt parcels. And it was an existing driveway, basically a farm entrance. And there was a second farm entrance down here. I don't think it was used quite as much. And this is the one that they will be using. And at the time that we originally looked at this in March, we were concerned with the utilization of that access point because it was the one closest to the residence and could impact more residential land uses at that location as opposed to the access here. Since then, the subdivision, or this exempt division, it's not a subdivision, this exempt division was recorded, and it made this access point less of an impact because there's 17 houses here. So that concern, I won't say went away, but it became less of a higher-tier item. It turned and went back behind these houses, the haul road did, and then came back down to the mine site. The applicant did move the ticket booth, along with the parking space, to maintain that 100-foot separation from an existing residence. They are also installing berms along both sides of the entrance road to help cut down on the amount of noise and dust that may leave this site that's shown. They're vegetated berms here as well as here.
How far, Ms. Valva, how far is, can you click back one screen? I believe it was back. No, forward one, I'm sorry. That's where the, that's where the roads cut the Balance Farms Drive. How far north is the service road going to be from that entrance?
This is the entrance to the mine. Balance Farms Drive will be, it's to the left of this.
So it's-
This is right at the terminus of north.
Well, I mean, yeah, the service entrance is going to be north of Balance Farms Drive, correct?
It is.
How far, ballpark? Three football fields?
Don't have that spacing. I can probably get it for you.
So it'll run along the backsides of those properties, which are, they're 10 acres, the service road, which there'll be a berm in. It's a paved road too, correct?
It is a gravel road, I believe. It's about 800 feet, somewhere in that neighborhood.
It's initially paved, right? 300 feet in.
Oh, the entrance road, yes. 200 feet into the property, it will be paved.
And it goes to gravel, yeah.
Right.
Nobody lives in any of those homes. There, I think there's a couple under construction now.
None that I'm aware of that have been seoted in there yet.
So if somebody buys one, they're going to know that possibly could be behind the-
Yes. And to that point, the exempt division does have easement language on that recorded document, so potential property owners that are buying in that development would be aware of the access, the easement.
Thank you.
So I will leave you tonight and sit back down and let the applicant do their presentation.
Before, Vice Chairman, did you want to bring the technician to address that concern real quick?
Yes.
Could you come-
I may have one other question.
Okay.
And so, if you go forward, so go back. Yes. Okay, so to the north of the access road, what is that? What are those?
Residences here.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Further down the road.
Down this road?
Yeah, okay, so there.
These are trees.
But I mean, it looks like lot lines.
They are.
Yeah, they're building there right now.
No.
They're not?
They're on, where Herrera is, that's where the houses are going up now.
Right, that side, right.
Yes.
The other side are lots.
The lot line extends to this rear boundary.
They're 10-acre exempt, right?
They are.
And so, what they're proposing is to cut basically halfway through their property with this road.
It's towards the rear. I think that was the reason why shifting it so far to the north was to reduce the impacts on those lots, and so that at least you would have a rear, a rear yard.
But they'll be able to get through that shrubbery or whatever to get to their backyards back in there.
Well, they actually, let me get here. So this might be a better depiction of what's going on. So this is the access road for Balance Farms, the exempt division. You have one minor subdivision lot, one that's less than 10 acres, and the rest of them are 10-acre, greater than 10 acres. So that north entry is here. It cuts back and across the Willie Lee Ditch, which is right there. It will come up across the backs of those lots, cross the railroad right of way, and then it enters into the 191 acre tract.
Better, yeah.
So they're basically going to get use of 70% of their lot, essentially?
Yes. And the recorded documents does specify the language on there for the access.
Okay.
Okay, I guess you're going to get a bible there and we get this sworn in. Place left hand, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the information provided will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but truth?
Love you, Father.
Thank you. Okay, if you could just state your name and address just for the record again.
Yes, I'm Dylan Lloyd, Currituck County Stormwater Manager.
Can I use his name?
Yes.
Okay, good. So she was speaking of protections earlier, I believe Councilwoman Jarvis, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I'm still stuck in Virginia sometimes. We identified areas along this haul road that could be kind of, you know, in danger of pushing sediment back into the ditch, and the haul road goes twice over this ditch. So I want to put protections such as riprap or retaining wall just to make sure that these trucks, which are very large hauling, you know, at least 30 or 40 tons sometimes of material, don't drop it back into the ditch. I mean, things happen. So that's what we meant by protections. The ditch is about maybe six feet wide, I'd say four to five feet deep. It varies in locations, but there's a large box culvert about it. I think 10 by 8 underneath the highway, and I'd recommend putting, like I mentioned, riprap or either some type of grade or retaining wall at the locations where the road crosses over. And we've discussed that with the developer as well. If you look right here in this vicinity, it crosses, here's the ditch, right? So here's the ditch. And on the other side of the highway, on the northern portion of the highway, is the Samuel Chapel Holiness Church. The parking lot has flooded on numerous occasions. It just takes a few inches, and that's all. We recently did some clearing and snagging last year. As you know, we spent about, a little over, we spent a little over $204,000 in money getting ditches around the county cleared out that were impacted by Hurricanes Dorian and also Hurricanes Florence, and some leftover money from Matthew as well. So we identified about 30, I believe 36 ditches in the county. And unfortunately, this one didn't meet the criteria at the time. We didn't find any recently felled trees or anything in that area. That was a year and a half ago. More recently, I was there this past April, in late April, in this area right here where you got some 10-acre lots, and this is a conservation area, you got some 10-acre lots where the ditch goes north of the highway, runs through these woods. There's several trees right in here, here, and here. So it's downstream. It's not right beside the church. It's not right beside these 10-acre lots or these new homes. But it's, actually, I believe this is it right here. I'm sorry to throw you off. It runs up underneath the highway into that box culvert, goes past the church. So right around here, here, and here. There's two large trees, I'd say at least a foot and a half in diameter. And there's another section where it's just some random organic buildup. I'm talking sticks, you know, rocks, branches, things of that nature. So, I mean, we've seen this, we've seen it flow. It works. It just needs a little bit of cleanup. And there's three areas in particular, if you'd like some pictures, I could, I apologize and bring them with me, but I can forward to anyone's email account if anyone would like to see some pictures.
But when you say a little bit of cleanup-
But when you say a little bit of cleanup?
Yes.
If those trees were removed and all that was ripped out of there, would it improve the flow thirty percent, fifty percent? I mean, or ten percent? I mean, do you have a gauge of doing that? How much improvement it'll give?
Well, I'm not an engineer, but I mean, from layman's speaking, I mean, I can say that taking those trees out of the way would greatly improve the flow. It would have, we're talking about removing several. I mean, eventually, the water gets high enough, it pushes over. So it's not like a dam. But, I mean, what it's going to do is it's going to improve your drawdown time. This backs up to a portion of, what is, awards in the United States of Rollin Creek and Tolls Creek further down the stream. And during tidal situations, what does happen is the water can actually push back toward us, upstream. So in some situations during tidal events, flooding and strong northeast winds, there's really no recourse. But yes, during a standard, you know, rain event, then it's going to improve drawdown times.
Is that?
Dylan, do you tell them there is blockage on Samuel Church parking lot?
There's a little bit of blockage there, yes. And most of it's in the form of those trees I mentioned.
Let me ask you this, Dylan, and you might not know. And somebody, is it the church's property? Is it Ronnie Powell's property north of the church? Who's, where the, where the? I mean, I know it leads from the, Mr. Powell's back there. He might, I just was curious on whose property it was.
The trees.
Yeah, where the trees.
It's right on this.
Churches.
Well, the church is this little square right here. Most of the trees I know, there's a property owner, like a home. So these are ten-acre lots all in here. The last home, like this used to be the highway a long time ago. And right here is the borderline. And the property line runs right down the middle. So it'd be kind of the responsibility of two people because it straddles both properties. And I'm sorry, I forget the name of who lives right here, but it's a recently built home, really nice. I'm not sure, you know. But I am sure the ditch line is kind of right down the middle. That's how it's designed. It's designed that way. So both properties can empty into a ditch, you know. They both have access. But yeah, I mean, there's debris and there's things littered. I mean, it's just, all of it needs maintenance, in my opinion. It's just to what extent do we have the resources or the, you know, or the, when we get this relief money from hurricanes and such, to what extent can we go out there and get everything out of the way? And then typically, like about six months later, something else falls in the way.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions from staff, to staff from the board commissioners?
One question about the flooding in the parking lot. Is that being caused by these trees coming down?
It's because the drawdown time, yeah, it is a factor. It's a very low-lying area. And sometimes, I mean, this is case by case. Sometimes it is the trees. Other times, like I mentioned, that wind-driven phenomenon where you've seen Tolls Creek, where you go over the bridge and the water's moving the opposite way and you get a windy day and just stays there. It gets stuck up in these little tributaries.
Okay, any other questions for staff before I bring you out? Can I? If not, thank you. Were you, Donna?
I'm done.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and invite the Alpican up, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Weber with the Parker Poe Law Firm, and I'm here representing the applicant, APV A LLC, in the special use permit hearing. I know that you all have a ribbon cutting very shortly, and so we'll try to move through this quickly. I'm not, I'm just going to get right to the heart of it. You guys do a lot of these special use permit hearings, so you know the standards. I've watched dozens of these hearings. Y'all work, particularly Vice Chairman Beaumont knows a lot about these standards and such. So I'm not going to bore you all with the standards. You know there are four. Endangerment of health and safety, conformity, things like that. We'll look at those shortly. I'm going to call three witnesses tonight. You know most of them, if not all of them. I'm going to call Dave Clements, and he is an engineer with Bissell Engineering to talk about the design and some of these issues that have been raised as far as water and such. I'm also going to call Clay Cartwright. This is a unique situation in that we have in this area another existing mine. And so a lot of times with special use permitting, you have a situation where you're guessing what the use will be. Right? You're guessing if it will affect the public health and safety. You're guessing if it will injure property values and that sort of thing. We have an existing mine that's very similar. And as the attorney up here, I'm not putting on evidence. I'm just making arguments. You'll hear from those folks. But I'll tell you that I was out there a few minutes ago, and my shoes are dirty and dusty because of it. I live near a quarry, a Martin Marietta quarry. And so when I heard this first, I thought, this is going to be a massive mine with dynamites and dynamite and structures and trucks and all this thing. When I went out to Mr. Cartwright's mine, it reminded me of that moving truck. Two men in a truck, right? This is basically two excavators and two guys filling up, filling up sand and taking it out. So I want you to keep that in mind because I had a misapprehension about what this mine really looked like before I went out there. So we'll have Mr. Cartwright talk about, you know, what he does as an operator because it's important because he will lease this mine and operate this mine as well. So you have seven years of experience operating a mine in this area. He'll be able to talk about what he's experienced and what will happen in this new mine. The third expert will be Stephen Craddock. You know Mr. Craddock. He will talk about injurious or non-injurious aspects of this to property value, conformity with the land use plan, and also whether this is in harmony with the local area. So I know that we're a little bit pressed for time. So, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is I have prepared a notebook that I'd like to hand to each of the commissioners that has a summary of the testimony and also has some key documents that are in the agenda packet. And that way, you won't have to flip through all of that, if you don't mind.
That's perfectly fine if you've got them available.
There's a couple of the trees right there that were.
Thanks, sir.
You can give mine a little closer.
I'm leaving at about thirty.
Now, if you all, if, I will let you know that the Currituck County zoning ordinance is 588 pages. I did print that double-sided, and I'll keep that tight. If you all want to give these back to me when you're done after you make your decision, I will make sure that I reuse the notebooks and recycle the paper. So I just find it easier in the limited amount of time we have to be able to look at the notebooks and make your decision off of that. You'll see there are eighteen tabs. I think the last three are the most important. Those three tabs are the three witnesses' testimony and affidavits that they've signed. The other documents are all documents you've seen in the agenda packet. We just put them there for your frame of reference. So what I'd like to do is I'll call the three witnesses. I'll ask them briefly to introduce their experience. And that way, I will tender them as an expert. And if you guys find that they have the expertise to testify, you can allow them to testify, and then they'll move on to the testimony. Now, there are three, there are two issues, sorry. One is, does this meet the ordinance itself? Right? And that's what we've been working with staff. And I want to commend staff and thank staff for their good work in that. They've been through two rounds of TRC comments. And we think that with these issues that you've heard, that staff, we think, is satisfied. And you'll hear from Mr. Clements about that. Then you turn to the four factors. We're going to focus on the four factors. And Mr. Clements is only going to touch on the other requirements in the ordinance. Because what you'll find is there are seventeen requirements in the ordinance in addition to all the state and federal permits. We've complied with all seventeen. But some of those seventeen deal with the four factors you all will be looking at. For example, environmental health and safety and things like water runoff, groundwater, that sort of thing. So we'll touch on that very briefly. But first, I'd like to call Mr. Clements up here. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to stand next to him, ask him a few questions, and then kind of turn it over to him. There is a PowerPoint presentation in your notebook, and you can follow along with that and take notes or use your worksheets that you just received, whatever you prefer. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and he can talk a little bit about his experience.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, my name is David Clebitt. I am a professional engineer with Bissell Professional Group in Kitty Hawk. Our address is 3512 North Croatan Highway in Kitty Hawk 27949. My professional experience is I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I've been working for Bissell Professional Group for sixteen years. Over those sixteen years, I have overseen the initial permitting and expansion of the Bonnie Bright Mine on Knott's Island, which is in Currituck County. I have also overseen the permit expansion of the Thrasher Mine in Moayot. So those are my experience in Currituck. I've also been associated with a mining permit and approval in Camden County and in Dare County.
And so there are other, if you look at Exhibit A, tab sixteen is where this affidavit is. Exhibit H in that tab has the professional qualifications and experience of Mr. Clements. And he is an expert on the development and engineering of permitting laws.
Thank you. So I have about five pages of outline here, but I'm going to try to cut that in half just so we can hopefully get out of here. You know, I've overseen this project from the very start. It started with a pre-application meeting back in November of last year. Then we had the community meeting a little later on that month. Went through the application in February. Received and responded to the first round of TRC comments in June. Then received and responded TRC comments again in July. And here we are today. Real quick, just an overview. This is a map of the entire county up there. The star is where the mine is located, just to give you guys an idea in case you didn't know exactly where it was. This second map is kind of zoomed in. The larger star, again, is where the proposed mine is. The smaller star, just down to the right of it, is where Mr. Cartwright's existing mine is that's in operation. It's only about a mile away, as the crow flies. And the little teeny star over on the right is where we are. Just a relative. This is just a general overview that we've already gone over. The permitting process to date. And it also lists all of the permits that have been received. I'm not going to go back over there. Donna listed them all, but there are seven. And I ask that you please consider those when considering the health and safety of this, that we've gotten seven state, federal, and private permits already for this project. Quick overview on this. As Donna stated earlier, the total property area is 191 acres. We're requesting 57.4 acres of that to be excavated, which is thirty percent and compliant with the ordinance. The nearest edge of the excavation is about 3,580 feet back from Highway 168, so it's pretty hidden. The nearest resident is 2,180 feet away. The nearest resident with a known well is 2,880 feet. That's almost double the county's 1,500-foot requirement for doing a hydro study on impacts to wells. So we don't anticipate any impacts to wells. And then the closest resident in the New Balance Farms subdivision would be about 1,400 feet away. So real quick again, right there at the very entrance shown in red, that's where we're constructing a 200-foot-long asphalt entrance that's 30 feet wide and perpendicular to Highway 168. Those are all requirements of the UDO and standard practice that has been permitted by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Along each side of the haul road, highlighted in a green color, not the light green, but a darker green, are the six-foot-high earthen berms that we're going to be building that have trees on top of them. Those are being provided to, you know, screen to adjoining properties, both visually, dust, and sound. So what we've tried to do here is, you know, add additional screening. The light green colors that are across the rest of there are existing wooded areas that we plan to remain. So that adds additional screening and buffering to adjoining properties along 168. So for instance, that very first property, you're going to have your entrance road. You're going to have a six-foot-high berm that's got trees planted on top of it. And then from there, you've got several hundred feet of existing trees that will remain. Thank you. In addition to what's shown on here, the blue line represents the Willie Lee ditch. As we've talked about already, it's a condition of this approval. The operator and owner have agreed to clean out the Willie Lee ditch. And it actually states on the cover sheet of the mines that it will be periodically maintained. So this isn't just a one-time cleanout. As long as the mine is in operation, Mr. Cartwright and Mr. Old will be responsible for maintaining the ditch along the entire length of this operation. This just shows the first half of it. While I'm on this screen, I'll go ahead and talk about the concerns with truck traffic in relation to the Willie Lee ditch and the possibility of trucks going in or materials going in. As you can see, wherever the road, the haul road crosses the Willie Lee ditch, we're providing six-foot-high berms between the road and the ditch. So that's, you know, a measure to keep trucks and materials from getting into the ditch, except for on the very northwest corner. That's the only place that we're not providing a berm. The road does get close to the Willie Lee ditch to cross the railroad track. That location was chosen That location was chosen because it was already an existing farm path that has historically been used for the railroad crossing. There was already an approved railroad crossing there. We have applied for and obtained the crossing permit with the railroad, and as part of the railroad's approval of this, trucks are going to be required to stop before crossing the railroad track going each way. So our concerns about trucks impacting the ditch in that area are very minimal because the trucks are going to be coming to a complete stop in that location, so they're not going to be, you know, wheeling through there at twenty miles an hour with a full load. They've got to stop. So, you know, and as time progresses, if this application is approved, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Cartwright will keep those shoulders nice and neat and handy because he can't afford to have his haul road washed out either. Let's see, moving on to the back half, again, that blue line across the very top is additional cleaning out of the Willie Lee ditch, all the way back to the back corner of the property. The teal-colored lines going around the outside of the mine, which is the heart of it, those are dewatering discharge ditch. Dewatering discharge ditches are a typical practice in this area for mining, and basically what they do is the dewatering pumps that are down inside the mine discharge the dewatering into the ditch, and it flows around to a settling basin. Well, the recharge ditch gives that water an opportunity to infiltrate back into the ground before leaving the site. And what we've seen over just practice of years is that that helps replenish the groundwater impacts from the actual excavation itself. It also reduces, you know, the amount of runoff that actually leaves the site from the pumping because, let's see here, I calculated it. Yeah, there's six thousand three hundred and fifty feet of recharge ditch, so one point two miles of recharge ditch that's getting constructed, that the water gets pumped through before it goes into the settling basin, which is up in that northwest corner, or excuse me, southwest corner in yellow. And that's, again, another common practice for dewatering in this area. It's a basin where the water is allowed to flow in, slow down, settle out. There's an outlet control device that's put in the very end of it that controls the outflow of the water leaving into the Willie Lee ditch so that we're not causing erosion, and we're also removing pollutants and sediment in that water before it actually leaves the site and goes into the Willie Lee ditch. Those are, oh, and the colors have gotten offset a little bit, but there was mention of the groundwater monitoring wells down in the bottom right-hand corner where the red circle is. There are existing wetlands there. As part of the discharge permitting and approvals with the state, we are putting in monitoring wells in those locations. Those wells have to be monitored once a week and reported every six months to the Department of Environmental Quality to make sure that the dewatering activity isn't causing adverse impacts to the hydrology of the wetlands that are nearby. So again, that's proposed, that's another common practice.
Excuse me, how close is that well to?
How close is this well?
Yeah, to the mine.
The nearest well was, what did I say? Two thousand eight hundred and eighty feet away. It's quite a distance. So those were my just general overview points. Again, cleaning out the Willie Lee ditch, preserving trees, screening along the entrance road and the buffer. I'd like to just real quickly talk about some UDO consistencies. As Ms. Voliva mentioned, the zoning district is ag. The land use is extractive, which is permissible with a use permit. As also stated previously, there are seventeen U-specific standards in the ordinance, which we've met. I'm not going to go through all of those. Donna spoke about a lot of them. I will just briefly talk about the ones that seem to be of more interest. We talked about setbacks and buffers already, so I'm not going to go back over that. A little bit more on dewatering. The dewatering process is going to be the same as Mr. Cartwright currently does. It's a thousand gallon per minute pump that discharges to the recharge ditch through the settling basin into the Willie Lee ditch. That Willie Lee ditch is back at the discharge point, it's twenty-four feet wide and five and a half feet deep roughly, so a thousand gallons a minute sounds like a lot, but when you convert it to cubic feet per second, it's only two point two-two CFS. It's not much at all. We are proposing culverts in the Willie Lee ditch that the haul road we're going across. The culverts that we are proposing are seventy-two inches in diameter, which is six feet, so I'm actually able to walk through those culverts. They're significant. Stormwater impacts, let me see if I can go back to this. Uh-oh.
Let me look up here.
Yeah, thank you. There we go, go back, one more, one more. There we go. So in terms of stormwater, I just want to mention that this whole area that's being mined or proposed to be mined totals about seventy acres. Right now, almost all of that seventy acres drains to the east and south and goes into the New Bridge Creek area, which, you know, there were concerns brought up at the community meeting about existing flooding problems in the New Bridge Creek because of beaver dams and maintenance and things. Well, with this application, we will actually be removing approximately seventy acres of existing farm field that currently drains into the New Bridge Creek. We're just going to be eliminating that and turning it into the mine, so that will be a help in terms of, you know, stormwater going towards New Bridge Creek. What we're adding into the Willie Lee ditch, again, stormwater that goes directly into the basin, the haul roads around the basin, the recharge ditch, all of that stuff gets controlled through the control measures that we're providing, so it's not just allowed to free flow off into the Willie Lee ditch. It's all being controlled by these measures and the operator through his pumping. We talked about groundwater impacts and the distances to the wells and monitoring wells and all of that. So in terms of traffic, the traffic, anticipated traffic loads are fifty loads a day, with an occasional maximum of one hundred loads per day during a big job. I will note that on the Thrasher Mine and on the Bonnie Bright Mine, the traffic loads were twice that, so this is, you know, half of what we have proposed and approved in the past. The Department of Transportation reviewed this connection at both the district level and the division level and determined that a turn lane off of one sixty-eight was not warranted, given the level of traffic or the lack thereof that was being generated from this. And the fact that we are, you know, providing just one dedicated haul road in this application instead of using a road that's also being used by residents is another benefit of traffic on this application. So I think that's a quick overview of compliance with the UDO and those standards.
Let me ask you, do you have a professional opinion as to whether this application meets the site-specific requirements of Section 401.5?
I do, and it's my professional opinion that it does.
All right, let's turn very quickly to the four standards. Did you look at the Camden Land Use Plan and the Moayot small?
I did, and as staff presented, there was one condition in the Camden Land Use Plan, and we felt like we're consistent with that, and there's a condition in the small area, no, yeah, small area plan that we felt like we were also meeting.
Do you have a professional opinion as to whether this application conforms with the land use plans?
Yes, it's my professional opinion that it conforms with the land use plan.
All right, we talked about environmental permits and other requirements in the application that have been met. Do you have a professional opinion as to whether this application is or is not injurious to public health or safety?
Yes, that's my professional opinion, that is, that this application is not injurious to the public health and safety, given the plans and permits and everything else that we've reviewed.
Can you tell me a little bit about whether you're looking at noise as an issue?
We did. I personally conducted a noise study where we went out to Mr. Cartwright's existing mine, which was nice that we had that opportunity. I took multiple readings, starting at the mine itself and extending away at two-hundred-foot intervals away, and all the way out to Highway one sixty-eight. And basically what we found, or what I found, was that the noises generated inside the mine are basically the same level as general traffic noise is generated along Highway one sixty-eight. That was inside the mine itself. Once you got hundreds of feet away outside the mine, the noise levels were, you know, on the order of half of what the traffic noise on one sixty-eight was.
Based on your review of the existing mine and the proposed mine, do you have a professional opinion as to whether the proposed mine would be in harmony in this area?
Yeah, based on those conditions, it's my opinion that it would be in harmony in this area.
And finally, you looked at whether the county facilities?
Correct.
Would be impacted, fire, rescue, those sorts of things?
Right.
Do you have an opinion that the existing county facilities can handle this?
I do. It's very limited use, this use is very limited in public utilities, and so it is my professional opinion that it's in harmony with that as well.
Thank you, and I'd like to offer, Mr. Klevitz, this affidavit needs evidence that's in the notebook, and the culbinance witness unless there's any staff questions.
Any questions? Okay, nope, thank you, sir.
Mr. Cartwright? Go ahead, Mr. Cartwright. I think we'll make this quick, and what I'd really like to do is just ask you to talk about the existing mine and your experience with it.
Okay, I'm owner of Kushtl C, current mine in Slago, probably around fifteen hundred yards as the crow flies to this one. I've been doing it for around seven years, I think. Pretty much simple. We don't do any screening or anything of the sort. It's pretty much a load and haul-out operation, the dump trucks coming in and out.
Tell us your plans with respect to the proposed mine.
So we open this mine, it gets approved. Once we get everything set, we start operating the mine, propose a bounce track. We outback the other one and move over into this one and operate out of that.
And how many years' experience have you had operating the current existing?
About seven.
And tell us a little bit about how many staff members you have, how many vehicles you have in the mine.
On any given time, we have at least one guy, if not two, in excavators, and then in the dry mounds when we're trying to get overburden off and reclaim and put them back. Our size, it could be, we've had as many as four people there. We have one bulldozer standing out for help of reclamation and a off-road truck for moving material around the side to get it back for reclamation purposes.
Is that the plan for the new mine as well?
It is, very similar.
All right, and can you tell us about your experience with traffic and noise at the existing mine and your plans for that?
Most people don't even realize we're there without seeing the trucks coming in and out of, down the haul road through the fields. You can't see us, we're in the woods. When we first came in there, we had to renew our permits. We had some neighbors that were not liking the fact we were there and didn't realize that we were there, believing it was Donna may have even been at the meeting when they were talking about it and then realized it after we told them we'd been there already after two years, they didn't know we were there.
And do you have environmental permits?
Yes, I have all the same similar permits that are issued here. I haven't any issues with any of them.
And do you have an opinion as an operator of the mine for seven years as to whether the proposed mine would endanger public health or safety?
No, it would not.
And do you believe that the proposed mine is in harmony with the area, given that you're a mile away and you're existing?
I think it's about as good as it can get, far away from people out in the middle of nowhere like you would want. I don't believe it's in harmony.
And tell us about public services. What sort of services do you use from the county? Do you have water, sewer, schools? What is the, what do you have?
No public services.
Have you ever used law enforcement out there?
We have, because of people trespassing on four-wheelers, insurance reasons, we can't have, you know, pedestrians coming in especially four-wheelers, you know, operating mine for obvious reasons can be dangerous.
So do you believe that the existing county services and facilities would facilitate?
Yes, I do.
Would be, let me finish a question before you answer. Would you believe that they would be adequate for the proposed mine?
I do.
All right, I failed to tender, Mr. Cartwright, as an expert in mining operations, but I'm doing so now and also tendering his affidavit, which is, Tab seventeen, you all have that. And I can go as quickly as possible, Mr. Cartwright, I know you all have a prior commitment, and so I just ask, Mr. Chairman, what is your preference as far as putting on that last witness, having your discussion?
Do you have a comment?
You need to present your case. I mean...
That was a comment I was going to make. We need to hear from all the witnesses, so, I mean, we'll...
We'll drive fast.
As fast as we can, yes. Fast as we can, so...
I do, sir, I do have a question for Mr. Cartwright.
Please.
Staff presented that there was going to be, and I don't remember the term, but basically material that's not good for anything other than holding ends of the earth together, i.e. clay, material that's going back. First of all, that's all, would that be considered, none of that's construction debris, none of that's brick and block?
In the permits of the state, it specifies as the clean soils, it cannot be construction debris, anything. It has certain verbiage. I don't know exactly what it left off of my head, but it is in a permit, when you're permitted to haul back in, that construction debris and all cannot be in there, it's soils.
So no hazardous materials, no, okay, and then the other terminology that staff used was that it was not going to be a big pond when it's all done. Do you have an idea what percentage of the excavation is that material's going back into, or?
So the material that's going to be used to reclaim it would be the overburden on top of it, and then you do get jobs where septic tanks have to, or septic fields, they take the bad dirt out, the clay, materials that soils up and the water doesn't absorb through, and they can be hauled back in, but that's on a job basis. I have no way of knowing that. I do know that material inside will be used, put back in, and as long as the permit's active and the mine's active, we can accept that material, and we take every bit of it to put back in, so it's not a giant lake when it's done.
Okay, but I guess specifically that it wasn't going to be a big pond when you're all done is what caught my ear, because at thirty-one acres, I think it'd be foolish for us to assume that it would be anything less than the thirty-one acre pond. I mean, it might, right? I mean, it might get smaller, but for our perspective, worst-case scenario is the whole thing as a whole.
I think we can ask our engineer on this mine, we're talking to Mr. Cartwright about his mine, but we can...
Oh, I'm sorry, well, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry, Mr. Cartwright.
That's okay. Best answer for that is we will be filling back in as we get material, so it's not a big...
Do you want that question to be answered?
I just don't want everyone's ideas to be stuck with it's going to be a much smaller pond than what it really could be, because it's thirty-one acres when we start digging. That's, I think, the permit for thirty-one acres, I think it would be naive to not think it's going to end at thirty acres, is my point.
I understand.
Donna, do you understand what I'm saying? We have no way of knowing how much is going to get filled back, so we just need to plan on the thirty-one acre, but you can check with your engineer.
I mean, that's, that statement is explains it all. They have no idea, so...
Got it.
Yes, worst-case, it would be the whole thing.
Got it.
I don't expect that to be the case, but Mr. Cartwright has no idea how much he might get, enough to fill half of it back in, a quarter of it, the whole thing, just, he has no idea. I have no way of knowing that, so, but he does have the permit to allow it to come back in.
Be a shower of late.
Mr. Cartwright?
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Cartwright, you with mine, I think most of the folks up here know you, you with mine, just going through your resume in about thirty seconds. Let him know that you are qualified in what you do.
I'm Stephen Wayne Cartwright, I live in Grandy in one of two Hickory Hills Drive. I've been living at that address for about twenty-two years, and I have been working as a professional real estate appraiser for nineteen years. During my tenure as an appraiser, I had performed almost six thousand appraisals and special studies, kind of like the one we are dealing with here tonight during that time. Certified in North Carolina and Virginia, and I love my job.
I appreciate that. Mr. Cartwright, your affidavit and report are behind Tab eighteen for the commissioners, and your resume is attached as well, as well as your report, which is attached as it should be, and tender of Mr. Cartwright as an expert and also his affidavit. Do you have an opinion as to whether this proposed mine will be injurious to, or excuse me, will be injurious to property values in the area?
In my professional and expert opinion, I believe that it will not be injurious to property values, and it will be in harmony in which the area that it is located.
And tell the board, please, what you base that opinion on.
I did my own professional research on this particular project, and if you'd like, I can go ahead and present.
Please go ahead. Tell us how you got to that opinion.
There you go, yes, sir. The research, and I'll, this is going to take perhaps five or six minutes or so. I have reviewed all the information that was provided to the planning department, including all of the application, all of the maps, all of the preliminary design drawings, the wetland delineation map, all of the mining permits that they've already gotten, the railroad crossing approval, the Dominion Power approval, the NC DOT driveway permit approval, the fact that they do not have a turn lane email, and Army Corps of Engineers approval. approval, and all of the other relevant documentation that exists for the case. I performed independent market research, including a thorough review of the market conditions that exist, and I have looked at all of the state permitted mines in our county. Previously, I had received a list from Donna Voliva with the mines that exist in the county that are permitted. There are sixteen on that list, and fourteen of them are active right now. I also performed a visit on-site at the proposed mine location on August eleventh of this year, as well as the surrounding properties nearby. Most all of the properties nearby, including the proposed sand mine property, are all zone A.G. agricultural. Also performed a drive-by inspection of some of the immediate neighborhoods that were near the proposed mining area, and most of them are agriculture and residential properties. And during my, during my research, I examined multiple sales that had occurred near these sixteen sand mines that exist in the county, and determined that the presence of a sand mine in those specific geographic areas in the county does not appear to have a proven negative effect on the sales prices of land or homes near them, and they appear to be in harmony in areas in which they are located. It appears that the sales prices of properties near sand mines are very similar to sales prices of properties that are located slightly farther away from these sand mines. And further, further analyzation of these sand mines, which are scattered throughout the county, show that existing individual properties and subdivision properties are selling near them, and new subdivision have been or are being created near them. This further solidifies our position that the existence of sand mines does not appear to prove they will be a negative effect on nearby property values, and they appear to be in harmony in the areas in which they're located. And here's an important number for you. Over the last year, there have been seven hundred one home sales in the mainland part of Currituck County. Their median sales price is three hundred seventy-two thousand four seventy-six. That's the midpoint of the highest and lowest on the mainland. And they had a median selling time of seventy-six days. Those are great numbers. Now, just so you know, there are existing sand mine operations very close to the proposed balance sand mine that do not appear to be causing any provable negative effect to any of the surrounding properties. I also physically inspected Country Scapes LLC mining operation on August eleventh of this year as well. This sand mine is located approximately five thousand two hundred feet in a straight line southeast from the proposed balance mine. This sand mine is run by Mr. Clay Cartwright, who would be operating the proposed balance sand mine. The mining operation at his location property abuts the Equestrian Downs subdivision, and that subdivision has access from Shawboro Road, also known as NC thirty-four. Within the last five years, there have been sales within this existing subdivision, and that was of land and homes, and they were similar in price to other similar properties that were offered for sale slightly farther away. And it appears that there has not been a negative effect on property values or the harmony of the area because of Mr. Cartwright's existing sand mine. Now, take note of this number. In the Equestrian Downs subdivision, which is adjacent to Mr. Cartwright's mine, the sales price median is three hundred ninety thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars. This is actually higher than the seven hundred one median sales that occurred in the county over the last year. This has proved that the existence of these sand mines do not appear to have a proven negative effect on the surrounding property's values or their ability to sell within a reasonable amount of time. It is also my opinion that any increased traffic coming out of the proposed mining operation haul road that will lead back to the proposed sand mine would not cause a traffic hazard or other traffic impact to the harmony of the area. It is a fact that from that location that you've seen in the photo that had the trees and the guardrail, that one can see in both directions clearly for twenty-five hundred feet north and south down Carrottoke Highway in another instructed line. And NC DOT is not requiring a dedicated turn lane for this particular project, which means a lot, it's saying that the traffic is capable, and especially being that they have almost a half a mile where they can see both directions in order to get in and out of there safely. I also examined the two thousand six land use plan and the Moyawak small area plan, and I understand that the county planning staff has concluded that the proposed balance sand mine is in conformity with these land use plans, and I concur with what they believe. And for all these reasons, it's my professional and expert opinion, which is based on the total amount of evidence that has been presented to you today, and all the evidence that has been presented to the county planning staff, and the market research that I performed, is that the proposed balance sand mine will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, and it is in conformity with our local land use plans.
Just a final question, did you include market data in which you were?
Yes, I did.
Is that bound as Exhibit A?
It is.
And that tells you that, just very generally?
What I provided, as you will find in your booklets listed as appendix A after my report, shows the sales that I encountered that are in the Equestrian Downs subdivision that are close to the land that is, the sand mine is on from Mr. Cartwright. And then on the following page, you'll see sales prices of homes that are a little farther away from the sand mine that are about a mile and a half away over on East Ridge Road. And as you can see, when you compare one page to the other page, you'll see that the marketing times are very similar, the size of the lots are very similar, the number of bedrooms and bathrooms is very similar, and their sales prices are very close together. This is further evidence of what I had researched, that the existence of a sand mine does not appear to negatively impact property values.
Mr. Craddock, does the floor have any questions?
Any questions, floor? Thank you.
All right, we respectfully move at the notebook that you all have, with tabs one, thank you, Mr. Craddock, and three, taking evidence, and I would request time for rebuttal if other members of the committee are here to speak, otherwise I'll include and close.
Any other questions, more?
I, the one question I had was, I think Ms. Voliva presented something about that the applicant was willing to remove the trees. Are you providing testimony as to that effect?
Are you coming with that down?
Yeah, I think there are two separate issues, right? We've got the one on-site that we've agreed to remove, and the one, I don't even know if we can get access to. So, I don't know that we can commit to remove it, because it's on other properties, and as I understand it, in the past, there have been attempts to take those trees down, and the property owners haven't given access.
Any other questions?
I think that's one of my major concerns. I know with other projects, when we improve something, and we go and look it down, certainly we have serious flooding issues, so, there would be some way to figure out, see if they can work out an agreement to try and get the downs pretty clear it out.
Christian?
A representative from the, from the church as well as the adjacent property owners here.
We're gonna get into a public hearing.
Yeah.
There, but, and I guess, real quick, then, is there any, does the staff, any questions on what was presented from the applicant? Did we rebut anything or question? Okay, thank you. I guess what we'll do, real quick, then, is we'll get into the public hearing piece, which I've had some people sign up, I had David Klebets, but I believe he was a presenter. We had Steve Weber as a presenter, Clay Cartwright, witness, and Steve Craddock, and then next I had is Ralston Spellman. Yes, sir. Did you want to come up and speak? Did you, were you able to get sworn in when you first got here?
I was sworn in.
You were? Was that, you was not, okay, come up, if you could come up here and... We need to get a Bible right there, get you sworn in, sir.
My name is, too, electing sworn in.
Okay, anybody who was gonna speak is not sworn in, please come on up if you didn't get sworn in at the beginning. Hold on, we got one more coming up. If you wrote your name down for public comment, please... All right, place your, oh, okay. All right, let's, all right, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence that you present will be the whole truth and nothing but truth, I hope you got?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, before we get started, let me ask the county manager, I mean, we're gonna be pressed for time to be able to get out of here and get over to a scheduled event.
Mr. Chairman, I would, as the manager, my recommendation would be, it's getting on about dinnertime anyway, let's take a break, you all can go to the event, reconvene just shortly after the event, whatever time you think would be appropriate. I don't think the event's gonna take more than an hour at the most. Come back here and reconvene the meeting, and you can finish it up. You know, get back here about seven o'clock, everybody has a chance to go get a bite for dinner, and you could finish it up, or you could reconvene it to another night.
Seven thirty. I think, let's, let's, yeah, let's take a recess break and reconvene back at seven thirty, and then we'll continue on this meeting at seven thirty. I mean, what's the pleasure of the board? I mean, I'll ask the board, we can, we can reconvene at seven thirty? We got some more business to conduct on this one, or we can, we got more business, we got other business to, to conduct, so we're gonna reconvene at seven thirty.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, and bear in mind, we have people that have come here from out of the area to be here this evening, there.
So, we, we're gonna go ahead and recess and then reconvene at seven thirty, and we'll continue on this, this meeting at seven thirty and then finish our regular scheduled meeting. So, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and take a recess right now, and then we'll reconvene at seven thirty. Thank you. All right, we're gonna reconvene into the, where we left off at the quasi-judicial hearing, and before we get into the public hearing portion of it, I'm gonna ask the applicant if he had any final statements he'd like to make before we get into the public hearing piece of it there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a couple of things. First of all, we'd like to reserve some time at the end, after the public comment period, to potentially call rebuttal witnesses and close, but what I really wanted to talk about was, we've been busy while you all were at your event, and I know Commissioner Etheridge mentioned an issue about downstream, and there's been, there was some testimony from county staff, Mr. Dylan Lloyd, and he testified there were three areas of trees that were backing up that downstream ditch, and my, my client, the applicant, has agreed that if we can get access to those three areas of trees, that, that we will take care of taking those trees out. And I think he testified that if those trees were, were removed, that would significantly improve the flow, thought it would solve the problem. So, we are, we're willing to agree to do that as a condition of the special use permit. I just wanted to let you all know. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and get into the public hearing portion of this, and I just want to remind anyone who's gonna be coming up to speak, just to remind them that this is a quasi-judicial, this is an evidence state, so anything that, that is presented before the board has to be expert evidence for us to be able to consider it regarding any decisions that this board made. But you're willing to make any comments you would like, but just wanted to reiterate that, that it does have to be expert testimony for us to consider it.
Well, that, Mr. Chairman, is particularly with regard to any testimony regarding the value of adjacent property, or any kind of impact on the value of adjacent property by the applicant's project, or any public safety issue, or any traffic issue or claim that the project might result in an increased traffic issue, that, that all can only be testified to competently by an expert.
Okay. Thank you for reiterating that. Okay, now, the first person I have signed up to speak is, I believe it's, it's Ralston Spellman, if you could just come forward then and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, county commissioners, my name is Ralston Spellman. I actually live on Highway one sixty-eight. I actually work the, right away for the sand mine is right by my house, might as well say, it's real close. My main concern is this, I've been in the county for over fifty-some years now. It's a drainage problem. Where is all that water is gonna go to? We already have a drainage problem in the county now, and it's becoming an issue all over in the county, all along one sixty-eight, after it rains, you see the water standing, especially like in Sligo, in Moyawak by Food Line, the drainage problem is, is getting out of hand, and I think the county needs to take a, it, look at how to solve the drainage problem in our county before we do anything else, before we have a, no, you say you want a sand mine to come into the county, I think the sand mine is gonna add to the drainage problem to, to our county. For instance, across the road from the Samuel Chapel Hole in this church, they already have a drainage problem back in, in that church. I have ancestors buried back there, I don't wanna see their graves floating up, I don't wanna see that, to me, that's gonna insult to injury. I don't wanna see their graves, I don't wanna see their caskets floating up on the ground, but to me, that would be hurtful. I, myself, I served the United States Army, I was a corporal in the United States Army, I have a bachelor's degree in computer science, mind management administration, even a master in psychology. I like Carrottoke County, I've been in this county all my life, but for the sand mine to come into this county and add to the drainage problem, I think that would be, it's add put, no, it'd just be more problem for the county. It's the drainage problem, it's just a big issue for this county, and that, that needs to be looked at more than anything else in this county.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have a Clifton Woodley. Can if you could just state your name and address for the records?
My name is Clifton Woodley, I live on fifteen ninety-seven, Carrottoke Highway, I've been living there for about thirty years, and I'm a army veteran, and my problem is same as his, the water. Now, if the water go out like it's supposed to go out, see all of us flooding from the bridge all the way to Moyawak and both sides of that road, not only the church. It can come raining over nine, get up in the morning, you can't even get out the door. The ditch is overflowing and everything, and we just got a problem with this water. I have a problem down in Sligo by that church, we flood it out. I had a field down there, I mean, the family, I've gone and cut it everywhere down there, but that place there in the water, and I'm afraid that's what's gonna happen to us. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley. Next, yes, yes, yeah, they came in, yes. Next, we have, sign up as Harvey Roberts.
I'd like to defer my comments until all the local people speak, then I'll speak as a sworn-up or a conservation district supervisor.
Okay, okay, and I know some individuals came up, they got sworn in, that their names were written down, but those individuals come up and, and like to speak at this time, or was everybody, has everybody addressed it? Okay.
Good afternoon, county commissioners, thanks for having me.
If you could just state your name and address again for the record.
That's my son that just, that's my son that just spoke.
Okay.
I'm hitting back on what he said, I'm concerned, I've been in the county over fifty years, and I love, I love Carrottoke County, it's a beautiful place, but if a mine comes up in there, we got a problem. All y'all sitting there knows it's a problem. Now, when it comes time to vote next year, you guys want our vote. So, now's the time for us, for y'all to help us. We need y'all help. We need y'all to speak out. We dearly need y'all help, and we are hoping and praying that you guys do the right thing. It's in our back door now, next year might be in y'all guys' back door. It's in our backdoor now, next year might be in y'all guys' backdoor. We need help from the County Commissioners. Please do right by the citizen. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Spellman. Okay. I didn't have anybody else signed in, I know somebody just came in, did anybody just wanted to speak that got sworn in? I believe. I believe you got sworn in earlier, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, if you could just state your name and address for the records.
My name is Ronald Powell, 1581 Carrituck Highway, Moyawatte. I'm just here to concern, concern in the water problem that we're having at our church after a big rain. Not against the pit, not, I'm not against the pit or nothing coming to the county. I'm just concerned about the water that we have now, and when the pit comes, will it bring more water? You know, it's, we're having a problem, I've been in Carrituck County for all my life, about sixty, seven years. And the church had been there for over thirty years. And the last two years, I've never seen a water problem that we have after a big rain. The water comes halfway to parking lot after a big rain, and that's my, the church has asked me to speak on that concern. That's, we're just having a problem with the water, the drainage. And that's all I have to say concerning the water, you know. I'm not against the pit coming, but we just want to know about the water that will come after the pit is there. Thank you.
Before you step away, sir, you said, you said something, so you said it's only been the last couple of years that you guys have really had flooding issues at the church? So prior to that time, was it just kinda normal, you may have standing water and then it would go away fairly quickly after a rain?
Yes.
Okay.
I knew, about a year ago, we had a problem, the water came halfway to parking lot of the church.
Okay.
And it came, it stayed a little while, but after a while it went away, but we never had that problem before. And after the big rains now, it still comes up. In fact, I think a couple of months ago, maybe last month, we had a big rain, and the water came up in the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, it helps us, and I think Harvey's gonna speak in a few minutes for soil and water, and he may be able to away someone else's.
Mr. Powell, can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
I know your property is north of the church, and then you have your stuff. The ditch that I believe it was our county employee Dylan was referring to, that, does that run down your property and the church?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I got, my property, and I have two main ditches that come on both sides of the property.
On the, on the north and the south, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they, like I said, I've already had a problem with the water, but not like this. Not like this, I mean, the water comes in it, floods the yard and everything.
I just, I just was curious if that, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that they were your, I thought it, your property abutted to the church, right?
Yeah, it's not exactly two churches, it's about a, on a couple hundred feet down.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Were you sworn in earlier, sir?
No, sir.
Well, then you need to come up and we'll get you sworn in, and then you could make a comment then. You got a Bible if you could, we just gotta get sworn testimony. If you, raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear, tell the truth, hold the truth, nothing but truth, I hope you got?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir, if you could just get up to the mic, state your name and address, sir.
My name is Luke Gallup, and the reason why I'm here is because I live in the neighborhood. And if you traveling south from the scrapyard that way to the neighborhood, my yard floods all the time a heavy rain. And it usually recents pretty quickly. But the idea, I'm the first one to get flooded in the neighborhood at a hard rain. My concern is, it's receding pretty fast now. But we don't dig in a pit, you said it's regulated back there. How close or was a pit being dug right by a major drainage ditch that presumably blew under the road or right next or on the property? I mean, why would a person, I mean, probably no law or regulation, but why would you build a pit by a major drainage thing for the town? I mean, I'm having trouble right now, 'cause it's on the right, right now, there's a source thing coming up. And I'm saying, I'm fighting water, keeping ditches clean all the way around, adding dirt when I can. So. I'm just, I'm probably on Facebook for when you come by my place, because it gets twenty feet from my sidewalk, and I'm the first one to head inside.
Are you a light green, light green, greenish color house?
I had the conservation man come by, I'm the.
Did you all say, what color, what, when you're coming south, when you pass the scrapyard, you're on the right, are you the?
Right, I'm on the right side, I'm right there with a sign that's on about shots and gunshot.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Gallup, just real quick, I didn't catch, did you get, did you get your address for us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay.
1494 Carrituck Highway.
Thank you, Ms. Gallup, we appreciate you. Oh, yes, sir, go ahead.
Where does your water go out of the highway?
I don't know where it goes, I'm keeping it clean enough, and it, it recedes on hard rains, it probably take two to four hours to recede, but it recedes.
Oh, I got a question, does your water drain there by George Mercer's, you're, you're gonna be towards Mercer's ditch or towards Samuel Baptist Church? It needs a clarification.
I'm on the right side, so I don't know where it drains, it just keep going down.
Okay, right now, this gentleman is speaking, his testimony, when he's done, if somebody else, the next person up has a question, they can address that, so let's give him his time up here.
Okay, so I can, I don't press pause, but I, I know, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Gallup, then, I appreciate that. Okay, then I think the next on the list we had was Harvey Roberts.
My name is Harvey Roberts, I live at 489 North Indiantown Road, I'm sixty-eight years old, I'm a lifelong resident of Carrituck County. I was born, raised, and I'll be buried in Carrituck. I've been a soil and water conservation district supervisor for approximately thirty-eight years. When I was ten years old, I started to become aware of drainage in the county. So, like a lot of people have said today, I am a professional, I'm a professional, I know all about drainage. I may not have the degree, but I know about the drainage in the county, I've been to most of these drainage.
Drainage places throughout the county, I got a big photo album with me, one tonight, and I got four or five at home that pictures will speak a thousand words. And tonight, we have Mars. Mars West is another supervisor, Mars is approximately seventy-one years old. Mars and I have lived here all our life, we know the drainage, we're farmers, we know the drainage better than any engineer that you can hire. We know where the water goes, we're familiar with all the ditches. So, saying that, I want to say, that I'm proud to say, I think with the zoning regulations and the stuff you have in the county, the developers have been doing an outstanding job in the subdivisions. The drainage is working, the swells, the retention ponds, all of that is working like it was designed to work. But guess where the problem's at? Downstream, the outlet, that's the problem. And that's what I'm here tonight to speak about with Samuel Baptist Church. Every time it has a rain, I ride the community, I take photographs, I have over twelve thousand photographs on this phone. I got over thirty-five hundred phone numbers, I got hundreds of photographs, I can prove what I'm saying. And Ben, you remember in March, we had a soil and water meet, and a Zoom meeting here at the county. The meeting started at ten, Ben said he had got complaints about drainage from countryside estates up to Moyawatte, behind the old dog track and the ABC store. I said, no way, that's one of the highest pieces of ground in the county, there's no reason for that to be water in those streets. If anything that's flooding, it's the development Whispering Pines, or whatever it's called, behind the railroad track off of Baxter Road, behind the ABC, behind the barber shop in the license bureau, that'll be flooding. Guess what? I went up there after the meeting, Dylan, our technician, went up there, I first went behind the railroad track. Not a drop of water in anybody's yard, it was working perfectly. Then I drive into countryside estates, when you get in there, the mailbox, there was six to eight inches of water on that street. I drove down there, all the retention ponds were full, I thought, why is this happening? Because before that subdivision started, the developer had a drag line going there, or an excavator, he cleaned out the Big League ditch between his subdivision and the farmland. You hardly ever see a developer doing that. But he cleaned it out.
Can I just, could you try to keep this pertinent to the?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna relate back to it. What I'm saying is, the developers have been doing a good job designing, the engineers been doing a good job designing the subdivisions, the drainage, the retention ponds. The problem from the soil and water office is the outlets. So I went up there to that place, I welt across 168, the water was draining under the railroad track, under the highway, but guess what? The water was dammed up under the railroad track. Guess what, there at Moyawatte, behind the Howard Hannah, and off of Putt and Ridge Road, a lot of that water comes under 168 and goes out to Mac Jones Road. Guess what? It was dammed up under the railroad track. They talk about New Bridge that's here by the sand pit. I got photographs where beavers built a dam under there and blocked it up, and the water was standing on that property, plus other farmland. So what I'm here tonight with, and I hope Manly West will support me and tell you, the problem is the outlets. When a developer comes in and develops two or three hundred acres, four hundred acres of land, he needs to be required, that water's going downstream somewhere. He needs to be, needs to be a requirement that he try to get permission from landowners to clean out the outlets. So I went to, so when it was flooded, one time the water was, at 168 by Samuel Baptist Church, the water was completely up underneath the highway and halfway to parking lot. I stopped and looked, there was two blockages, they keep the gate closed, I went by there several times before I found a man, the gate was open. I took one of their members over there, I said, here's your problem right here, while you got water on the church property. If you could clean them out, it's fine. I went and ran on that subdivision, behind there, I didn't walk the ditch like Dylan did, but where I saw from the church property to partway where those houses are behind the church, the ditch was clean. Now, Dylan testified there were maybe three trees that needed to be removed. I didn't see those, but I would agree, from 168 to back of the church, that needs to be cleaned before you even do anything to those trees. And at the soil and water office, we'd like to make a recommendation, we've been trying to talk to the planning department and everybody, the developers need to clean out the outlets, be responsible for the outlets.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
I will take any question, anybody.
Okay, all right, I had no other individual sign up, and I'll just open it and give one more opportunity, anybody did not get a chance, who walked in later or anything. If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this point, and I believe the applicant would like an opportunity to come back before we close the evidentiary stage.
If I might just ask, my witness come up and say two things?
Okay.
All right.
I don't know if this is on the screen or not, and maybe you can see it, tell me.
Yeah, we'd like, I guess, if we can get it on screen so the audience could see that, I don't know if we got that on the screen, so, okay.
This is on. So this?
Uh, it's.
So this is behind tab three.
One, one more? There you go.
If you all want to also look behind tab three. In your notebook, the last, the last map.
Okay, good, they can see it from now, okay.
If you switch to the PowerPoint.
That's it, right there.
Stop, right there.
Don't move.
Perfect, don't bring. All right, all right, I'm gonna hold this, okay. Mr. Clebbets, if you could explain where the proposed mine is?
Right here.
All right, and where is the existing mine? All right, and can you show us where the church is?
Right here.
All right, and where is the Willie Lee ditch?
This teal colored ditch around here.
All right, and what has the applicant agreed to do with respect to the Willie Lee ditch? Is this the north side? West side? What is the applicant agreed to do on the west side of 168?
So the applicant has agreed to clean out and perpetually maintain during the life of the mining operation from this point, which is where the outlet is, all the way to 168. So, just always have that ditch cleaned out. And in addition to what you added earlier, the applicant has added that he's willing to go in on the east side of 168 and clean out the three identified trees that Mr. Dylan noted, if he's able to get access.
Do you own that incentive property?
I do not, no, I don't.
Mr. Powell, do you want, by one of the?
Yeah, okay, Mr. Powell, come back up, please, sir. Well, yeah, we need to bring him up.
Can you see where your property is, Mr. Powell? This is the church? Yeah, this is the church right here, right? Do you own property around the church?
Um, yes.
Behind the church?
The south side of the church there.
So it's this way, down here, this?
Oh, okay, north side, okay, north side, okay. Okay.
It's over here. Does that ditch run up to your property by any chance? Does your property go up to the ditch you're talking about?
Yes, the front ditch, but I have ditches on both sides of the property, headed back to the Big League ditch, so across the road.
Okay.
And the gate, you said the gate was closed, but the gate is never locked, it's just a push-up hammer, I'll open it up, and then I'm gonna go in and check it out. No problem getting to the property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just to finish up, there was some testimony about another ditch, tell me about this ditch.
This is the New Bridge Creek ditch, which was references having dams created in it. And as I've notified during my previous testimony, currently, this area where we're putting the mine is about seventy acres. All seventy acres of that existing farm field drains into this New Bridge Creek that has a beaver dam. But with the creation of the mine, that seventy acres will no longer drain into New Bridge Creek. So we're removing seventy acres of contributing drainage to New Bridge Creek through the creation of the mine.
Can you tell me how you're doing that, and is there a basin that allows slow drainage?
Correct, so, I mean, we're doing that just by creating a hole in the ground with the drainage ditch around the outside to collect everything. Any water that goes into the mine can only get back out of the mine by use of the de-watering pump, that de-watering pump is built. before it goes through an actual concrete control structure that's been designed to minimize the flow out of that basin into the Willie Lee ditch. So it's not just free pumping all the time, you know, it's only gonna discharge when there's water coming into it from the actual pumping operation.
Are you familiar with some of the projects that Mr. Roberts has brought up, as far as the subdivisions doing an outstanding job in handling their stormwater?
Am I familiar? Yes, sir.
Or has your firm done any work with some of those projects?
My firm designed the Windsock Mines project, which he indicated drains really well. My firm did not design the other project, which he said was flooding. And I know that has nothing to do with the design of the subdivision, that has apparently something to do with the fact that it was stopped up downstream, which I understand.
No. Harvey?
Harvey, you can't, there's...
So, so my question for you is, you know, as an engineer, right? I'll give you the fist bump. As an engineer, do you model beaver dams? I mean, does that even come into any kind of calculations for stormwater?
No.
I mean, and it sounded like, as Mr. Roberts was testifying, that a lot of the problems appear to be maintenance-oriented.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So is there any kind of modeling that accounts for, because I know there's other ditches around here, that out came vehicles, out came refrigerators, out came, you know, tires and stuff like that. I mean, there, I just wanna say, there's a basic assumption going in that whatever features gets some level of maintenance.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. I mean, is it possible to model that stuff? Yes, I mean, everything's, I think you can model everything, but in this particular application, we were not proposing to pump or discharge any water. We're actually removing water from the area that's been identified as having beaver dams and existing drainage measures in it. So there was no need to even evaluate that.
Is there any intention of help, of ensuring or at least monitoring that critical junction going under 168 for obstruction? Is there any plan to...
So, just to answer that real quick, so, you know, again, the de-watering is handled through a pump that's controlled by the operator. And so there's a de-watering schedule provided on the plats that kinda outlines the typical de-watering operation, which can be, you know, three days of pumping on, four days of pumping off. That normally occurs near the beginning of the operation, just to get the water table down, so that they can begin excavation as time progresses. Normally, they back off from that. One of the conditions of the UDO, and it's listed on the cover sheet of the mine itself, says that, that the de-watering, that monitoring of hydrogeological conditions downstream or around the mine must be monitored in relation to the de-watering activity. That's one of the reasons why we put the groundwater monitoring wells in, but it also requires that the operator-owner, you know, monitor what's happening downstream of the de-watering activity, and if there are adverse effects, that they have to stop. They can't just continue to pump. So, and Mr. Cartwright could testify to this, but I've spoken to him about, you know, not just hydrogeological issues, but, you know, if he happens to come to the operation that day, and he sees that everything on 168 is flooded out from a rainfall, you know, he's not gonna go in there and crank the pump up and start de-watering the mine down, because everything's flooded downstream.
Who's the governing agency over that? Is it DEQ or is it county?
Well, DEQ issues the permit for de-watering, yes.
So if we're pumping when we shouldn't be pumping, or when you're, if you're pumping when you shouldn't be pumping?
The condition on monitoring the effects, and what we're talking about, I believe, is what's listed in the ordinance.
Okay.
So, just to kind of allay some fears here, if you're able to get access to that ditch and snag and clear it, and you're able to improve the ditch that runs under the highway, and you're taking water that was in, once going, I think you said 70%...
78%.
78%. Can you, within your professional opinion, say that this is gonna solve some of the flooding concerns at the church?
Well, from the aspect of if there can be some improvements made from 168 by the church all the way to the outlet, I mean, certainly that would improve the conditions at the church. I mean, that's just improving existing drainage conditions. So, you know, removing the 70 acres is relative to a whole nother drainage direction, so that's not gonna have any impact one way or the other on the church site. So the only thing that I believe can help the church site out is to get permission and to actually go in and clean out that downstream condition.
And that's what y'all are willing to try to do, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And so let me just ask you, just to put it on the record, Commissioner, so you heard testimony of Mr. Lloyd, is that right?
Yes.
And the staff report, I'm a bit sorry. The staff report indicates that soil and stormwater technician identified several large trees and stumps offsite and downstream that may affect the drawdown time. Is that right?
Correct.
And you understand that the applicant will agree to work with soil and stormwater technician to find those large trees and stumps that may affect the drawdown time?
Yes.
If we get permission?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any? I think that's it.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hold on, we have a question.
Please.
Do you have any experience with a mother sand mine that has a big hole in its perimeter and decided that it created flooding problems, disallow problems when it goes out?
So, both the Rapture Mine and the Bright Mine have these recharge ditches as part of their operation, and in all the years that I have been assisting those operators and owners, I've never had any issues or concerns with, you know, the de-watering operation downstream. And, I mean, I can't speak for Mr. Cartwright's mind, but he might be able to, but the ones that I have experience with, there's never, I've never been made aware of any issues. Both of those mines, mind you, came in here and asked for expansions and received those expansions based on being in good standing in Currituck County. That's one of the conditions of getting an expansion, is you have to be in good standing with the state and the county. So I think that speaks to the fact, too, that there probably was not anything addressed or concerned downstream.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else from the applicants?
I wonder if I could just call Mr. Cartwright a few questions.
Okay.
All right, you operate the existing mine down here in this area of mine, is that right?
Right.
And do you conduct de-watering conditions at that mine?
We do.
Have you had any issues with flooding connected with your de-watering at your mine?
No.
Have you had any complaints around flooding at your mine?
Not that I'm aware of.
And when you operate, lease and operate the new proposed mine, do you have an intention to stop the watering operations if you see flooding conditions?
Yes. Yeah, I would not, I wouldn't de-water during, during rain events, flood, if anything is possible.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, we rest, and I'd like to at some point just close out and summarize the evidence, if I may. And I believe you've already introduced the gentleman.
Okay. Speaking of Mike.
Okay, at this point, if there's no other further question of the applicant from the Board of Commissioners, I'm gonna go ahead and close the evidentiary stage of this meeting. And I have a request to take a quick five-minute recess, and then let's take quick five minutes, and we'll come back, and then we'll ask some work for some action. So we'll be back in five, take five minutes, be back a quarter after eight, real quick. So we did close the evidentiary stage, so I'm gonna ask if the applicant would like to make a closing statement.
Yes, sure. Thank you. I know it's late, so I will make this quick, but...
This is not late.
One in the morning's late, okay.
Maybe it's later.
You've got to drop.
All right, so thank you again, Commissioners, for your time this evening. I think maybe George Washington put it that you do routine things well, right? And I think that our engineers have designed a sand mine that is designed well and will operate well. As you know, for these four factors, we are required to put on evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. And if we put on that evidence, the North Carolina Supreme Court tells us that the board shall issue the permit unless there is contrary evidence of the same ilk, of the same standard, competent, material, and substantial. What I'd like to do, very, very briefly, is just lay out what I view to be the evidence. I went through it a little bit quickly, but you do have your notebooks, you do have affidavits, and I'd like to just go through that quickly. The first one is, it's not one of the four factors, but it's the question of, does the design meet the UDO, right? There are 17 provisions in the UDO that go to the extraction and mining aspect, and the site plans, three separate site plans were admitted, submitted to the county, went through two rounds of TRC comments, and you have the staff report in front of you. And so we believe that the site plans, as they've been issued, do meet all the conditions of the UDO. Dave Klebitz went over all of these conditions, and we believe they meet the standard. But the first factor, the first factor is endangerment of public health and safety. You all have the benefit of an existing mine, right? The existing mine came in to you all's dais and asked for a special use permit, and it was issued. You actually have the same owner here who testified, Clay Cartwright, testified that in the seven years that he's operated the mine, he has not had complaints or issues. In fact, the only complaint he ever had was, when they complained, the new mine was going to have noise. And he said, "But I've already been operating for two years." So clearly, the folks who were complaining at the time weren't even aware that there was a mine out there because of the noise. You heard that Dave Klebitz testified that seven permits have been obtained. I'm hearing squeaking. Thank you so much. I thought there was a mouse in here, I apologize.
I don't know what that was from, okay.
I thought it was me. So, what you have seen, that's right, I'm wilting, what you have seen is federal, state, and local permits have been issued. On the federal side, you have the US Army Corps of Engineers that's issued a permit. You have North Carolina DEQ, you talked about North Carolina DEQ has issued two permits, NPDES and stormwater permits. Also, you have a Mining Act permit, and if you haven't looked at that Mining Act permit, that is a very prescriptive permit. Mining is one of the most regulated industries in the state from an environmental standpoint. So what you basically have is seven public and private permits that have already been issued for this mine. It deals with air, dust control, it deals with water, drainage that we've heard, and it deals with waste, both reclamation and refuge. Refuge, you can't obviously take things in and dump them in these mines. The second item that I didn't hear too much about, but we heard a little bit, is groundwater protection, right? We have to protect these wetlands, and there are groundwater monitoring wells that are proposed to be installed. Regarding traffic, you heard that the road was going to go through the subdivision, but it has been moved to a stand of trees behind the properties. And there are limits to the loads, only a certain number of loads can be every day. And DOT has looked at this issue twice, right? It's issued a driveway permit, number one, that will have paving at the front of it, and number two, it determined that there was no turn lane required. So DOT has taken two looks at it. The UDO also requires certain things with regard to traffic. The trucks have to be covered by tarps, right? There's a limit to the loads that can go in. And you heard that there is a berm on each side, so a six-foot berm on each side. There was some testimony from the soil technician, he was a little bit concerned that maybe some materials might fall into the ditch, but we've got a six-foot berm on each side that's going to protect those ditches. Noise, you heard that sound readings were taken, and they were not, any of the mine activities were not anything above the highway traffic on 168. And when you got a little bit away from the mine, you didn't have anything above crickets, noise, and that sort of insect noise. I told you, I went out to the mine today, got my shoes dirty, got my tie a little bit dirty, and I was amazed, because as I mentioned at the beginning, I thought this was a Martin Marietta quarry, right? It's two guys in a truck, right? You heard Mr. Cartwright testify that there are two excavators, and when I went out there, one was taking over burden and refilling where they had already mined, and the other was taking up some mining activities. That's all I saw. Again, I'm not given testimony, I'm just arguing, so don't think that that's testimony here. The other one, the low impact, right? You heard Mr. Cartwright, you also heard Mr. Klebitz talk about low impact. There's no, no impact on water and air because those are permitted, and the de-watering, we've talked about that, I'm not gonna go over that again, because we went over that in rebuttal. You heard from Mr. Craddock that the increased traffic would not cause a traffic hazard or other traffic impact in the area. The next one, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, right? You've, you've seen Mr. Craddock up here many times, he sits on one of y'all's boards, he is a credible and a well-experienced individual with over 6,000 appraisals and other reports. He's testified many times as an expert witness. His conclusion, based on market evidence, is that there is no injury to adjoining or abutting property. Again, this is not a guess, right? We are not looking at market conditions in other places. We have an existing mine, and we can look at property values around that existing mine and the other 16 mines or 15 mines in Currituck County, and that's where he came to his conclusions. Harmony in the area, right? This also is sometimes a guess, as to what harmony is, what that might mean. We know that there's an existing mine in the area that has a special use permit that this board has concluded is in harmony in the area. You heard Mr. Klebitz, you heard Mr. Cartwright, and you heard Mr. Craddock all testify that this is in harmony in the area. One question that came up is, is this in general conformity with land use plans, right? So staff talked about this a little bit, and Mr. Klebitz talked about this in Mr. Klebitz' affidavit, he touched on this briefly, page six, this is behind tabs 16. There are two plans, the 2006 KAMA land use plan, there's one policy, policy ID-8. And ID-8 says, "If you're not gonna get a state permit, we can regulate it at the county level," right? Here, we have a state permit and we're being regulated at the county level. It's approval both by the state of North Carolina, by the county, and also by the federal government when it comes to the nationwide wetlands permit. The second one is the Moyawak Small Area Plan. There's one policy that deals with that, that's IS-1. Says the costs of infrastructures, facilities, and services are not significant and largely are being borne by the applicant. You've heard today that these costs and such are being borne by the applicant, not by the county, right? And the county has, or excuse me, the applicant has agreed to go offsite and find those three locations where the soil technician has indicated are stopping of the church property, and clean those out. He testified that, in his opinion, that would solve the problem, and we're willing to, if we can get access, go out and find those trees with him and take care of that. So you heard also that Mr. Craddock testified that he reviewed the land use plans, both the KAMA plan and the Moyawak Small Area the KAMA plan and the Moyoc Small Area Plan, and he believed that those were in conformity, excuse me, the use was in conformity with those plans. The next one is, will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, right? This is a situation where it's two guys in a truck, right? There's no water out there, there's no sewer out there, there's no electricity out there. In his affidavit, you'll hear, or you'll see that Mr. Cartwright testified that law enforcement has only been out there once or twice because of trespassers, that hasn't used fire and rescue. So the governmental facilities, the governmental issues out there are very minor. So this will not, as the factor says, will not exceeds the county ability to provide adequate public facilities. So you've heard both from David Klebets and from Mr. Cartwright on that. So those are the four factors in a nutshell, and we believe that we have brought forth to you all competent material and substantial evidence, and we believe without any contrary competent material and significant evidence that the permit should be issued. I'm certainly available to answer any questions, but at this point, my closing ends.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we've closed the evidentiary stage of it, and appreciate your closing comment there. So I guess at this point, I'll ask the Board then if there's any discussions among the Board, or if there's a action we would like to take at this point.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make a comment, listening to some of the folks who came up to speak tonight, and they said they needed our help, and drainage was an issue in the county, and the Board of Commissioners understands that very well. That's one of the things we tackled this past year, was to create the Moyoc Drainage District encompassing the entire area. And y'all may have heard me ask about this ditch early on when Ms. Volble was up here, that was it in that drainage district area, and it is. And what we have done is, we're gonna look at outfalls, specifically ditches like this, and go in and try and fix some of these things. We have worked with the developers, and in this case, allied properties in the past has gone in and been able to obtain stuff downstream, and in this case, they're willing to do the same, to try and make an effort to fix drainage downstream off of their property. We cannot legally compel them to do that, but we can ask them to help out, and in many cases, they are willing to help out. And listening tonight to Soil and Water Conservation, I think you guys heard that they've identified the problem. We've got a couple of trees in there and a couple of stumps, it sounds like, and if those can get removed, you guys should see significant improvement in your drainage in that area. It may not go away immediately, but it'll be much more short-lived. As we heard, it's only been in the last couple of years that the churches have had these real problems, and I'd wager that those trees ended up in that ditch in the last couple of years, thereby causing the problems for the church. So hopefully, that will all get rectified in the near future, just through the county's efforts at some point to get in there. We're gonna work hard to help fix the drainage for the entire area as best we can. We recognize that and have been talking about it for years, everybody's been talking about it for years, but this Board finally took the bull by the horn, so to speak, and said we're gonna do something about it. So we are aware of that, and we are working towards that. So I just wanted to address you guys, and appreciate you coming out tonight to speak to us, we did hear you. Thank you.
Any other on the Board? Any comments, questions? Then I'll ask the Board then entertain some action for motion.
I will, I'll move to approve PB 21-06 Balanced Track Mine because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the special use permit review standards of the That being said, I also wanna add the drainage improvements that our stormwater technician, like a Dylan's last name, Lloyd, that Dylan, sorry Dylan, that Dylan brought up far as to have those three areas that were shown by the attorney of the applicant, to have those cleaned and snagged and cleaned out, and that the use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. Policy ID-8, I wrote that down here, and the 2014 Moyoc Small Area Plan, and finally, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
And just to be clear on your motion, so as a condition that the applicant made, they're, it's an effort to get permission, if they're able to get permission, we can't compel them to, so I just wanna clarify that...
Yeah, if able and permission is granted to clean those three areas addressed by Mr. Lloyd, the county stormwater technician.
And I'll second your motion.
Before you take a vote, I think there was one other condition that the applicant proposed, which is that he would...
Oh, keep maintaining...
Maintain, he would repair and maintain the ditch on the property as long as the mine was in use.
In use. To continue to maintain, and that was the ditch on property, all the way leading up to 168 on their side while the mine was in use throughout the whole permit.
Alright, I'll second your amended motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll ask that the Board, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Yes.
I made a promise to take all y'all's back and recycle, I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, I did want to go back to my promise. Thank you. Alright, the next item is old business, and I'll give the, I'll give it a couple minutes just for the, to clear out real quick.
That's true, I could, I could, I'm home. When they're over there? No, I'm not doing that.
This job's way easier. You just get to yell at one person.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, good night. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and carry on here with the next item is old business, which we carried over from the last meeting, which is PB 2110 Currituck County Tax Amendment, Request to amend the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Chapter Six, Subdivision Infrastructure Standards, and Chapter Ten, Definitions and Measurement to Allow Family Subdivisions on Parent Parcels Twelve Acres in Area or Larger Without Required Connection to an Existing NC DOT Maintained Street. So I believe we left that for any further discussions, I believe, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. I believe, I think, the best way to start this is I'm just gonna give you a very brief summary of where it was left, and then just let the conversation continue, and staff is here to answer any questions. So there were really three items where the discussion centered around, the first was the roads, and it seemed like the Board was leaning on the fact that it was okay to change the road requirement to meet the design standards of the ordinance, but give some flexibility for the director to alter the material some, you know, whether to match the existing road or, you know, along that. The other item that seemed to be in agreement was not having the consent of every property owner that accesses that street. The conversation that was being had at the end, that you ended on, was in regards to how many lots could be accessed from the private access street, and that's where we left off, and that's staff's understanding. So with that, if you don't have any questions, I'd open it up for discussion, and we're here to help out, you know, the best we can. Oh, and I will add, staff was asked to do some research on the past ordinances, which Jenny did do, and I believe was sent out to you last week, so we're here to help you out.
Thank you. Alright, any questions, comments on the Board, discussions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of, in kinda summarizing some of the difficulty last meeting where we discussed this, centered around the condition of roads that currently exist in the county, some of them have fallen into disrepair, and would this exacerbate the situation that they're already experiencing and actually make it worse? So the first question, I'm gonna kinda lob at Ike, is what current enforcement capability does the county have to ensure roads are maintained?
Up until the, well, I guess I'd first say, up until the time that a road is accepted by DOT into its system, I think the county has a certain ability, depending upon the conditions placed on a subdivision plat, for example, to ensure that the roads are maintained at a standard as approved under the county ordinance. As to privately owned roads, there is no authority for the county to require the owners of private roads, other than when they may have been approved in a subdivision, to maintain them to a specific level. I guess, other than that, that's pretty much all the roads that we have in the county, other than DOT highways.
So, in your opinion, is a road agreement as part of a deed of trust, is that a legally binding document or aspect thereof?
Well, I think, a road agreement between property owners for...
In a subdivision.
To maintain a road, certainly that would be a contractual agreement requiring parties to the agreement to meet certain standards that's set forth in that document.
And I'm not aware to the degree that Commissioner Jarvis is, on the roads that are horrible, et cetera, et cetera, are, do we know whether or not any of those roads are under a road agreement at this present time?
There was a homeowners association many years ago, but that has been disbanded in at least two of the subdivisions in the southern end of the county. There is no entity, except the goodness of the heart of people who live down those egregious roads, to maintain it.
Do you know if the road piece is part of their deed and trust?
I do not.
Okay.
That's, Paul, why you brought that up, and we're asking, so in your particular case, just using you as an example, you have a road agreement.
That's correct.
So, and you asked about it, does the county have any, we don't have any recourse, that would become a civil matter between property and...
Correct, that's correct.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing I'm trying to make the point of is that establishes a legal, you buy a land, if you buy a land, and that comes with your purchase, you are fully informed that here's your responsibilities and the responsibilities of the neighborhood itself, in our case, to maintain and keep that road free of potholes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I got kind of a, you know, what-if type thing. So under the proposed modification to the family subdivision, and some of the roads that are down south that have fallen in disrepair, what hope do the residents of those roads have that that road will ever be brought up to a specific standard? I'm going way out there, I'm not attempting to practice law, I don't even play one on TV, but I would suggest to you, highly unlikely, unless some kinda outside motivator enters that picture, no one's gonna, out of the willing, depending on the length of that road as well, there could be significant costs with trying to get it, you know, to use the comment on the director, to be able to put a grade on it, to get it, you know, cleared of potholes, et cetera, et cetera. And if, if having a road agreement was part of the approval of this, right, then, you know, going back to the, everybody having to give a thumbs up and approve in order to be able to do it, which was one of the things that we'd looked at as potential language, in order to put a road agreement in place, will require 100% of the existing residents to modify their deed of trust to put that into the record books. You can't force somebody to modify their deed unless they sign up and approve that, is my understanding. So you would get, you know, if somebody wanted to put in a family subdivision on a private road, everybody's gonna have to agree to it if there's not a road agreement in place, or it's not gonna happen, because that's just a prerequisite. The director still has the ability to approve whether or not a road has met, you know, the improvement standards, you know, as part of the language that we've thrown out there, but, you know, right now, there's not a whole lot of incentive to fix roads that are out there, you know, and if, as part of a condition to plat approval, or COs being granted to family members as they move in, if part of that is the road needs to be graded, be free of potholes with a crown on it, in many places, that's the best chance that road has ever gonna have in getting to be brought up to a drivable standard and maintained in such a standard. Finally, is something Commissioner Etheridge brought up in our last meeting, you know, I mean, I'm, there is no group, no offense, there's no group of people on the face of the planet that I would rather hang out with or live nearby than my kids and my family. That is my epitome, that is the epitome of heaven when it comes to me. We talk about, we complain about, we bemoan the fact that our kids go off to college, go learn skills, and don't come back. Well, part of the reason for that, because we also acknowledge that there's a severe lack of affordable housing in the county. We heard previous testimony this evening that the average house sold for $370,000. I think it was actually slightly more than that, 372. That's slightly more than that, but thank you, Kevin. So my point is, if we're trying to get our kids to move back to this area, we, you know, my family bought land with the intention that our kids come and move back. We're trying to give them the ability to move forward, and, you know, using the 370 as an example, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that a typical lot is running 40-plus thousand dollars just to put them, you know, to put a building up. We now are approaching some element of affordability that we'd all like our kids to be able, well, I would, I mean, I don't know about y'all's kids, but, you know, the point being, there are enough mechanisms in place, you know, back under the old ordinance, you know, and all, too bad Dan Scanlon's not here, because I'd ask him this question, but Ike, you may remember, there was a group that wanted to use a family subdivision and put five lots on two and a half acres, and the county was pleased when they took a different road out. This was the NS track back, you know, in the middle of nowhere, right? And the county negotiated with them to get them to buy off on, I think, four lots instead of five. And the comment made at the time was, well, they could've gone for a family subdivision and put five lots on two and a half acres. So here we are, fast forward, we're limiting, you know, the parent track to 12 acres or more, we're having a minimum of three acres per track, and I would argue, if you insert the requirement that there be a family, that there be a road agreement in place prior to the ability to even apply for this process, I think 90% of the concerns become taken care of, because now you actually have a legal vehicle that you can use to enforce road capability. During the process of construction, that road's gonna have to get improved to the director's, you know, specifications, but again, I would argue, that's the best shot at some of these private roads are ever gonna have at getting their roads maintained. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
So Paul, a question for you, you bought in a 10-acre exempt, right?
I'm sorry?
Your neighborhood is a 10-acre exempt? Your neighborhood is a 10-acre exempt? Everybody's on 10-acre parcels?
Yeah, or more.
So, what you're trying to do, though, is go around that 10-acre exemption by adding kids' lots, I get the reasoning, it's laudable, right? But, so, what about the people there that bought in to 10-acre exempt lots?
This was permissible when they bought in?
No, it's not. That was why I had the staff go back and look at this, because you made that statement, and I was trying to find a way that if it was prior to '13, to look at it from a grandfather standpoint, to come back to that standard, it was never that standard. You were never allowed to have more than five on a private road, and it's certainly not on a 10-acre exempt, it doesn't really matter, it's 10-acre lots, right? You can have more than five, because it's a 10-acre exempt.
Did that not change with the reset?
No. It did not. So this was never permissible for you to do, right now, you have 48 acres, you could recombine and carve out three extra lots for your kids, right, go 12, 12, 12, and have three lots there, under the current rules, the way it's currently set. And so, it's, this feels like a two-step back. Going back into the 60s, this county has always had pretty much the same regulations. The only other thing was they had one per year, and '13, whatever happened then, changed some of that, and that's when I think the staff started seeing problems with this Ginger Morris Family Subdivision Standards text amendment happened in '13. And I think that's what you're thinking of, removed exempt family subdivisions, as the, and what it did is, family subdivisions defined as a subdivision where single-family lots may only be conveyed to family members within two degrees of kinship, blah, blah, et cetera, the same language. And then they added the reset for the parent parcel date every 10 years for family subdivision, and included language that a maximum of one lot shall be conveyed to that individual family member, including family subdivisions on different parcels, and it removed provision that only one lot could be created per year. And that's when that one lot per year came away. And then after that, it's kind of where we're at today. It stayed the same until '19, when we changed it.
What, if, this might be a question for Kevin. The 10-year reset, now, if somebody on, like you said, on the 10, 10-acre, whatever, if they own more than, if they own four 10 acres, three 10 acres, or whatever, I mean, as far as the 10-year, when it came back, is that something, or is it?
I don't think the acres mattered in a family. It was 40,000 square foot, right? I think you're mixing up 10-acre exempt subdivisions with a family. We've got two different things in here.
Yeah, yeah, but what I was saying, I thought there was something they could do after, like, I mean, if it was a-
That's where that 10-acre lookback came in, 10-year lookback.
The 10-year lookback came back in, what, I mean-
I'll ask for staff to clarify when I misspeak, I won't say if I misspeak, because I think I might be getting ready to. There are actually three things we're talking about. There's 10-acre exempt, which by statute is just exempt.
Yeah.
There's family subdivisions, and then there was a time when there was also what was called a family exempt, or exempt family division.
That's the '13.
That's the thing that went away in 2013. And the exempt family division, in the history that Jenny put together, is essentially, you could take a parent parcel, you could carve one lot off, minimum 40,000 square feet, and then that was done. So if you owned six different parcels, you could carve, I guess, six different lots off, but that went away in 2013, the exempt family subdivision. Then what we know of is the family subdivision comes in, and then it morphs and changes a little here and there. If I get that right, look at that.
It's like that video, would you look at that?
That answered my question.
Any other questions on the board? Any more discussions?
Let me ask you this, too. I do have a question on the roads, on, well, all right, I have a private road, we'll just, and I don't, but we'll just say that, too, I have a private road, and it accesses, I don't know, seven people, three people, whatever it is, it doesn't matter. Is there kind of, does the county, do we have for a private road, for some kind of compaction requirements for a fire truck, for the, for a school bus, or whatever, down a private road? Is that something like, were some of these roads, and some of them on the south end, I've seen them stuck before, but is that something where-
State building code requires that when you build, I think, the third house on a road, that the third lot comes into existence, that road has to be able to handle a weight that is commensurate to a fire truck. I can't remember.
75,000 pounds.
There you go.
But as far as maintaining it, though, I don't think there's anything to maintain, because I've been down some of those roads in a fire truck, and you'd go airborne all the time flying through that area, but nobody's going to maintain it.
I just want to say that I certainly agree with Commissioner Beaumont, that I think it's a dream of a lot of people to have their children live nearby, to have your family close, and it's my hope that one day my children will have the means to do that. And I do empathize with the situation of wanting to give that property to his children. I taught a lot of his children, and I do understand that, and I, I just have qualms that when we change the rules for family subdivisions, as we've seen from that history that Jenny did an excellent job of compiling, rules, when you change them, they often have unintended consequences, and I think the history that, as I understand it, with family subdivisions, has been a history of people skirting around the rules. And I just cannot, in good faith, apply this text amendment to the county and to my district, because I know what that district already looks like in places, and I have a lot of qualms with what effect this would have with district, too. So I'm going to make a motion for denial. I make a motion to deny PB 2110, Kirtut County text amendment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. As-
You want to make the statement?
I don't know, do it, page 88, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that-
Oh, the actual-
It does not meet the-
Because it's not consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, Land Use and Development Goal Number 10, to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the sustainability of land infrastructure available and the compatibility of surrounding land uses. And the text amendment may not result in a logical and orderly development pattern because the extension of substandard private access roads for family subdivision purposes may detrimentally impact the existing property owners along the street.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second from Commissioner Etheridge? Do we have any further discussions?
Yes, I'm going to use what Kevin said, private road. I've got a private road. There's three different property owners that access their property off of that private road, myself, my family, and two other private property owners. So are we going to cut them out if I want to give the lots, five lots, to, if I have five children, you're going to cut them off of them having the ability to give a lot to their children, if they so desire, on that private road?
I understand that, but I think that there are remedies in place to be able to do that. There's minor subdivisions and other methods that we have taken time and deliberated and put into law, into the UDO, and I think that, once again, when we change the rules that have been established and in place for so long, there are great unintended consequences for people who never see that coming, that are blindsided by these changes and the consequences. So, I mean, I think there's remedies out there for your situation.
Here's the remedy, one of these landowners is a mile from the highway, and you were going, you're saying you're going to require him to build a road and pave it to go back there.
Two million dollars.
The other one is three-quarters of a mile. What is the need of owning property if we can't use it?
And I'm not saying you can't use it, there are, there are remedies out there for you to be able to use it, and I just think-
It's called takings.
I just think that we have rules in place, and I just feel strongly that this is not the way to go about doing it.
Okay, we have any?
Oliver, maybe answer that question, there are other remedies for people who would want to.
Well, I don't think it's out of line, I think it's the wrong way, I defer to, Kent to start with, and then it's Ms. Voliver, please don't take that the wrong way, don't-
I'll take that.
Can we cut that mic down?
And I will relay the question and the answer that Ms. Voliver gave me a second ago. Yeah, on top of minor subdivisions, you're also with a denial, it would not take away the current way you could do a family subdivision. What this would do is just not permit those additional lots, or that extension of the private access street, but you could still do a family subdivision the way the ordinance permits today. Thank you.
All right, any other discussions that the board may have?
No, but Owen, yes, Owen, you bring up, you know, a reasonable discussion, I think, to be had, but I don't believe at any point that was ever allowed, going back 30, 40 years.
Well, I know that there is a subdivision in this county that was 10-acre lots, and the developer said that the 10-acre lot subdivision exemption, he divided them into five-acre lots, and said the exemption away from the county ordinance existed to the five-acre lots, and he did it.
Well, I think, did he get away with something?
It was his board.
Right, did he get away with something?
It was questioned.
Right.
And it was-
I'm sorry, we're in deliberation with the board. Well, no, we're done with this phase of it. I'm sorry, but it's deliberation with the board right now.
So, I just, it is, you have a relevant point, that, you know, you have these properties back there, but at the same time, going back, I'm looking at 1965, the rule was in 1965, every lot shall front or butt a public street. '71, every lot shall front on a public street, or shall front on an all-weather access to a public drive. And that's probably the last time that you had that all-weather access, that you could really do something like what you're talking about. And so, you know, it's never been an option, as far as going back before I was born, from what I can read, to be able to do this. So, it is something that, it's a growing pain of this county, I think, is probably the best way to describe it.
Okay, any other discussions or comments?
I just, I mean, like, he brought up a valid point about the mile, the distance, and I know exactly where he's talking about. I mean, if there are road agreements put into play, I mean, the couple roads that Commissioner Jarvis spoke of on the south end, I'm very aware, and she's, I mean, but like you said, I don't know that you can just use those, you know, I mean, like I said, if, I think you could put more on it than we already have now, I mean, they could do nothing to it. I mean, so it's like, I think we would be, you know, putting more, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for, you'd be putting more rules to keep it in order and in place, and down there on the south end, there's nothing that can be done.
But no other roads can be cut.
Right, it stops.
But I mean, yeah, but if there was a road agreement in place, it would be prepared.
Yeah, but you're, yeah, but you're going down the rabbit hole, you go a mile, and divide, and divide, and divide, and divide, and divide, and how many people continue to go on this road, on this road?
I know on those you can't, but I'm just, I'm just-
That's what she's talking about, is those scenarios where this hasn't been thought out, and you get into those scenarios. Now, if this board wants to have this discussion again, and really think this through, and not try and do it tonight, then I would be open to that discussion, but I think that's for another day.
Well, okay, we've got a, we've got a motion for denial on the board, we have a second, we've had some discussions, do we have any further discussions?
Thought we were having further discussions.
What's that?
We were having further discussions.
Well, we are, so, okay, well, then, no further discussions, I'm going to ask this board then for some, to take a vote. All in favor of the motion for denial, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no. Okay, four to three, the motion for denial passes. Okay, moving on, to new business. Designation of County Attorney Ike McCree as interim county manager under GS 153A-84, effective August 28, 2021. I believe that's just going to be-
It's a simple vote.
Just a simple vote for approval, that's-
Who'd approve?
Mental.
A motion and a second.
I have a discussion.
Yes.
Have we, do we, have we developed a plan for how the search is going to progress? I would like, at a minimum, at our commissioners' meetings, to get an update as to what the progress has been, and, you know, I think last meeting, Owen, you were going to talk to retired something to look at potentially bringing in a retired county manager.
The chairman has talked to him. And during my commissioners' report, if you recall, I did talk to Neil Emery, that he has offered to come to this board at our next meeting, or prior meeting, I just got to get the board's decision on when he could come in, and-
Next meeting, or prior?
Or we can have a special meeting, or no, we can have a special meeting if they choose, or prior meeting, too, but he would be glad to come in, he's with the North County Association of County Commissioners, to educate this board on the processes, the steps, what we can do, what they can do for us, headhunting firms, and spend about 30 to 45 minutes going over the whole gamut, let us ask questions, and from then, after discussing with him, then maybe give us a better idea how we want to start moving forward, if we want to use that firm, or he'll give us some recommendations from headhunting firms as well.
Mr. Chairman, at the conference, Commissioner Jarvis and myself spoke to him at length, and he told us he was going to contact you, and he has worked for many years as county manager, now for the state, and I think he would be an asset if we could maybe have a workshop with him, but he did want to speak with the chairman.
Yes, and I had that conversation with him, and that's what I was going to ask the board then, if they so choose, that's, I think, would be the appropriate next step, is for us to communicate with him, so we're all together, having discussions, and then we can make a decision after that, as we know exactly our path to move forward.
Have we fleshed out, or looked at, or sketched a, a hiring?
No, no.
Not yet.
I think that should be the entire board, but I'd like to see him go ahead and vote on the-
Yeah, right now, right now, we have to have an intern in place, the day after he, you know, so Ike would, would accept, or vote on having Ike fill this role indefinitely, until we make a decision as a board to bring in a different intern, let the county attorney carry on for the length of time we need, until we, as a board, can make a decision. But right now, we need to make this, we need to vote on this publicly, to make him active, and then we can make further decisions as we go on.
I will say, and I talked to Neil also, there's 25 different openings right now around the state for managers.
It's going to be a difficult time.
This could be a six-to-nine-month process, and he is putting together a list of names of people that could come in as an interim manager.
And when he comes to meet with us, he said he would probably have a few names and recommendations, and some, an outlook on what he's finding out there, so he was going to do some preliminary searching for us.
So add us to the, to the list of the now hiring signs going out front.
Right. Put it on the bill.
So, anyways, getting back to this-
Get a banner on the jail, so you can see it from the highway.
Getting back to this motion, again, this would, this would have, per statute, this would have a county manager in place on the 28th of August, until we can make our next decision.
Do we have a, so, do we have a motion on?
Yeah, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second, we're just waiting on a vote.
We have a second, so, if no further discussions, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now.
We can call them at 12:01.
Okay. Okay, the next item is the, or call Ben in 11:59. All right, the next item is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner, motion from Kitty Etheridge, second Vice Chairman Beaumont, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move adjourn.
For second.
Motion and a second from Selena Jarvis, Commissioner Jarvis, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.